Okay, I'm going to call this meeting of the Issaquah School Board to order for March 25th, 2021. Apologize that we're a little bit late. The Board has been an executive session on legal matters and on collective bargaining. No action was taken. And we are going to start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and I should just mention, Dr. Gallinger will be joining us in just a few minutes. He's been late working with another vaccination clinic. Next on the agenda is student input. I believe we still have students from Gibson Eck. Marnie, is that correct?
Yes, I know that we have Simone. Simone, I don't know who your peer is and if they're on here.
Hello, I haven't had a, I don't have a peer to join.
You are unmuted on our side, but we can't hear you.
Oh, no, that's not great. It looks like my microphone.
No, we still can't hear you.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's something with your microphone on your computer.
My microphone is fine.
Ah.
Oh, no.
Okay, well, that's awkward.
My microphone is totally fine.
Oh, hang on. Yes, just hang on a minute.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. What did I hear?
Oh, but now she's muted again. If we could unmute her, I think she might have sound.
Awesome. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
Wonderful. Hi, everybody. I was just saying that I wasn't able to have another participant to join me today because what I'm going to be sharing about is our finals, our final Gibson Eck version of a final exam is happening tomorrow. So the question that I'm going to answer is, what is one great creative or artistic project you or your classmates have participated in recently? And I'm going to use this question a little bit liberally to talk about the Design Fair Exhibition. So Gibson Eck has three different exhibitions throughout the year. Two of them are formal presentations to a panel, usually accompanied by a PowerPoint or a tour through a student's professional portfolio or website. But one of them is what we call our Science Fair Exhibition, or Design Fair is the more formal name for it. And usually what students do is we build a tri-fold or a more interactive presentation, and we stand at different stations throughout the school so that members of the community can walk through and see our work and ask us questions directly about it. And we usually have pretty high attendance. So this year, to virtualize that, we're making a public website that has links to every student in the school's big project that they're working on right now. For me, that's the same project that I talked about last time I was here, my podcast, Students Speak Out with Simone St. Pierre Nelson, that I am creating as schoolwork. And that is the culmination of my junior and senior year. So it's a pretty big deal. All seniors have their capstone project as their Design Fair project. I know other people have been working on, another senior at my school is working on bringing Dungeons and Dragons to students with, I think that his outreach is bringing Dungeons and Dragons to students with learning disabilities, which is really cool. I know that there's a project about building a greenhouse at the school. There's a lot of really awesome projects, and they're all showcased in this online website format, so you can see what our whole school is doing. And because it's public, that means that parents, but also mentors who spend their time mentoring the student body, are able to see what the whole school is up to. So I'm pretty proud of how well it's transitioned into online. And if anybody who's watching this meeting is interested, I think you can go to the Gibson Eck website tomorrow, and you can see all of our work, which is pretty fabulous.
Great, thank you so much. And as always, please stick around as long as you can and participate in the meeting. Obviously, if it's finals week, maybe not. But we value your input to the extent that you're able to give it. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public input. And before I recognize the public, I believe the superintendent has a couple of items for us.
I do. Thank you, President Weaver. I wanted to take a minute tonight and acknowledge that next month, April, is National Autism Awareness Month, and Friday, April 2nd, is World Autism Awareness Day. I want to thank ISD parent Melinda Gage for bringing this to my attention so we can make this public recognition prior to the actual day and not wait until later next month for our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, is a developmental disability that can cause significant challenges for individuals throughout their lives while creating stress on families impacted by autism. We also know that 1 in 54 children have been identified with ASD, and it occurs among all ethnic groups. The Issaquah School District is committed to inclusive practices for all of our students, and with research, training, public service, support groups, advocacy, and increased awareness, we will develop a more accepting and inclusive culture that will better serve our students and families impacted by autism. So please, again, join me in recognizing World Autism Day next Friday, April 2nd, and Autism Awareness Month, the entire month of April 2021. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And again, thank you to ISD parent Melinda Gage, and I hope you will all join us in recognizing Autism Awareness Month, beginning April 1st. I had one other thing that I wanted to share tonight prior to the remainder of our public input. And for me, this is a recognition of one of my cabinet members. Tomorrow, we will be saying farewell to Assistant Superintendent Lisa Heckman. I want to take a minute to honor and recognize this longtime ISD teacher, principal, and assistant superintendent for her 25 years of outstanding service to the students, staff, and families of the Issaquah School District. I also want to personally thank Lisa for her tremendous support for me and our fellow cabinet members these past seven years. Lastly, I just have to acknowledge the incredible work Lisa has done helping our school district manage this terrible pandemic as our district COVID coordinator. Lisa has worked closely with public health, district and building-level administrators addressing issues related to COVID-19, and helping us establish and implement COVID mitigation and response procedures that have helped us mitigate against COVID cases. I know for a fact that even some public health officials have come to rely on Lisa and seek her out for information related to public schools and COVID. You'll hear more about some of these efforts during my education update. Lisa has a wonderful opportunity to return to her family farm in California and support her parents. I'm so grateful to you, Lisa. I will miss you on many levels, but want you to know, we all wish you the very best on this new and exciting adventure. Just know, you can always catch an ISD board meeting on YouTube if you're missing any of the fun. And I know Lisa is out there in Zoom land tonight, but thank you, Lisa. Oh, great. I had to actually look up. Well, thank you, Lisa. You know that you will be really missed here in the ISD, but thanks for all that you've done for us. And thank you, President Weaver, for allowing me to do that.
Yeah, but it's hard to say goodbye.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this brings us to public input, and this is public input for items not on the regular board agenda. So we will have an education update. If your comments relate to in-person school or remote school or something related to that update, your public input would be better given at that agenda item. If you have public input on some other topic, this would be the time, please, when I call on you, clearly state your name and school attendance area. Please limit your comments to two minutes. My colleague here is timing you, and you will hear kind of a beep or a ding dong type noise when your two minutes is up. If that doesn't work, I'll probably remind you, but it's better if you hear the noise. Please keep all your comments civil and respectful. Our students are watching. And as a rule, the Board will not respond to public input. So if you're looking for a dialogue, this is probably not the place. And with all of those caveats in mind, I do see some hands. So Doug Crandall. And also, please turn your camera on so we can see you. Doug Crandall?
Yes.
There you are. Gotcha.
Appreciate it. I'm Doug Crandall. I have a senior at Issaquah. My wife's a kindergarten teacher at Issaquah Valley, and I'm also the Issaquah Girls' Basketball Coach. And I might ask for like 10 extra seconds because I'm not going to make it through this without choking up a little bit. I heard today that our football season is effectively over. I don't have a football player. I've had four kids go to the high school. None of them have played football. And you guys got my email, and I'd ask you to read that. I'd ask you to read the links I sent. What we've done doesn't follow any science. The science shows definitively that, actually, as the NFL put it, COVID doesn't cross the line of scrimmage. But I'll let you read my email, and I know some others here have read it as well. But I think what just pains me so much is the last thing I put. We have starved our kids from sports, from drama, from school. Our country's done it. Our state's done it, and we're doing it as a district. And then we threw them scraps, and now we've taken those scraps out of their mouth. And there's no excuse for it. You guys talked about core values, and I appreciated that a couple meetings ago. There's only one core value any of us involved in kids' lives right now should care about, and that's selfless service of kids. It's the only thing that matters. We need to be servant leaders in their lives. It's what I'm about to do. I mean, I'll toot my own horn for a second. In 15 minutes, I'm going to head to the Issaquah gym and supervise open gym. I'm not doing it for a state championship. We're not going to do that this year. I'm not doing it for money. I haven't been paid to coach basketball in well over a year, and I don't do it for the money anyway. I'm not doing it to win games. I'm not even doing it because I love basketball. I'm doing it because I love every single one of those girls. I love them, and they need this right now. And those football players needed it, and our kids need to be in school. My wife got back in the classroom as soon as she could because she loves her kids. That's why she did it. She did it because she loves her kids. I subbed in third grade on Monday. I've never done that before in my life. I subbed at IVE in third grade on Monday, and I fell in love with those little faces within a minute, within 15 minutes, with Mason, with Zunis, with Annie, with Xavier. They were so happy to be there, and I'm glad they're back. But I've spent the last year monitoring my own son's mental health, his stability, and done everything we possibly can to make sure he's okay. And that's all I care about, quite frankly, in my life, is making sure he's okay.
I do need you to wrap.
Okay, I'll wrap with, "I'm sad, I'm angry, impatient, and I'd like to see some of that from you as well. I'd like to see your hearts broken, like our hearts are broken. Not your students. Show your emotion, get angry, and let's get back to selflessly serving our kids."
Thank you very much for your input. Kimberly Brown.
All right, can you hear me okay? It's giving me the full things at once.
You're good. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kimberly Brown, and I live in the IVE service area. As a parent of a second grader who started a hybrid earlier this month, I completely understand the big sigh of relief that so many of our secondary parents are hearing or giving with the news that their students get to go back to school on April 15th. But this has come at a huge cost to the school board, this district, and every family that it serves. While it feels like this has been a year consumed with bargaining to get our students and staff safely back in classrooms, the reality is that bargaining has just begun. In 97 days on June 30th, all of these MOUs expire. And a year later, on June 30th, 2022, the four-year contract with the district and IEA will also expire. So bargaining has really just begun. And here's where we stand as families. Our school board mandated reopening of secondary next week on March 29th, and that directive was ignored, and the date was missed. After 12 months preparing to return to classrooms, the administration failed to act as directed by their five bosses. Superintendent Thiele, I recognize that as a harsh statement, and I acknowledge that you and your team have worked tirelessly to get our students back. I'll also acknowledge I have limited understanding of collective bargaining, because as parents, we're not allowed in the room to see what happens. And I'm not looking for any blame. I only know that this failure to do as directed by our elected school board makes me gravely concerned for the future bargaining that will be undertaken by this district in the coming months. I'm asking that the school board critically consider what changes are necessary so that collective bargaining may be done efficiently and effectively for the benefit of the students of this district. One example would be to consider whether we should be including emergency law, subject to ongoing revision by state lawmakers as science evolves into our bargaining agreements. A simple example is the six to three foot that changed today.
Thank you.
I don't know what that was. Go ahead. Oh, she's been muted.
She got muted.
Thank you.
All right, that was not intentional. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was waiting for it to figure itself out. A simple example is the revision of the six feet to three feet that came out from the CDC, and then most recently today from the state. Our current MOUs, rather than stating something simple such as, "We will abide by all state and federal law," as well as guidance issued by the CDC, instead include language that requires rebargaining when the guidance changes. Unless our bargaining teams have professional expertise on public health and epidemiology, I don't understand why our district can't write a contract that allows our administration to immediately take action to snap to the latest science and guidance. Our teachers and staff are critical to our district, but we cannot allow ineffective, lengthy negotiations or negotiations that disregard the instructions of this elected school board to prevent achievement of the sole mission of this district to educate our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. I'm sorry about the glitch in the middle. Carrie Kiefer. Carrie Kiefer. There she is.
Hi. So I, this is very random because this all came down today. I wanted to follow up on what Doug was saying. My name's Carrie Kiefer. I've got two high schoolers at Issaquah, and I also have a husband who's an assistant coach for the football team. And this news today is devastating to these kids. They have followed the rules. They have done everything and beyond since they were allowed to start. And because of another team's situation, our kids are now paying the price. Our district has not advocated for these kids. Our district didn't let them play for two months when they were allowed by all of the legal entities. And our district is not advocating for them now. There is no way our players had 15 minutes of direct contact with those three kids. We've quarantined the whole team. Every single person on the team and the coaching staff has gotten tested. I don't understand why we are making these sweeping decisions. Our coaches can't even coach any of the teams until next Wednesday, and they were all vaccinated at the ISD clinic. That's a 75% effectiveness rate for after dose one. And they are quarantined from the kids that they have worked so hard for, because everybody knows how important this is for these children. They have been, it has been dangled in front of them, and they put in the hard work since December. They came, they followed the rules, they did what they had to do, and now it's being taken away from them by some ridiculous rules that were not even their fault. I would encourage you, if it's not ISD making these decisions, I really hope there's somebody at the district who is going above and beyond to go and advocate for these kids, because I'm telling you, they need this for their mental health. If we can't get them back in the building more than one day a week, whatever it's going to be, they need this. And it was ripped away from them after two short weeks, and it's just not fair to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last person we'll take is Kaylee Byrne.
Hi, my name's Kaylee Byrne, and I work at Issaquah Middle. I want to, I wasn't planning on talking, and I'm really scared I'm gonna cry. So I'm just giving you that warning. So if I pause, I'm sorry. I'm so excited to see my students. They're just so excited. I'm feeling really conflicted, though, on the message we're sending, especially to our our female students. This is partially because of conversations that have happened in these board meetings, and partially because I feel that Inslee has kind of tied the hands of teachers, which is a predominantly female-led career. We are being asked to bargain things faster than I think we are able to. We are asking to send teachers back into school without all of the answers. And we're not compensating teachers for any of the extra time and energy that they're having to put in, and we haven't been doing that all year. And quite frankly, it's just very disrespectful to all the women in this career because we care so much. This is something that we have done as a society for a long time. And I just hope that we can consider that moving forward, because we are telling our students right now that have mostly women as teachers that their jobs are not worth as much as other people's, and that's really unfair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The, oh, that's very small. The consent agenda is a meeting management tool whereby the Board is able to pass multiple items with one motion. All items have been reviewed by the Board prior to the meeting, and any Board member may remove an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda for discussion if he or she so wishes. Do I have a motion?
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, establishment of the regular agenda. Are there any changes?
There are none.
Okay, on a roll. And that brings us to our first item, which is the superintendent's education update. I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, President Weaver. One note I did want to just make that we are advocating for the Issaquah football team. We are not the sole decision-makers. We have to work closely with public health of Seattle and Keene County. That's where a lot of the guidance on who has to be quarantined, and so goes forward. So I haven't had any updates in the last few hours. It sounds like maybe there's been some, even some more developments. But I do want people to know, these are not decisions that rest solely in our hands, and we certainly are advocating, and we see the value that having these opportunities for our students is bringing. I am excited to, we did have some exciting news on the education front today. As you know, I am pleased to report that earlier today, we welcomed back hundreds of fourth and fifth grade students into our schools to receive in-person hybrid learning. Reports that I have received from the schools are very encouraging. The attestation process went well. Students were excited, and staff greeted them with happiness and enthusiasm. I want to thank all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers who are pioneering concurrent in-person and live-streaming teaching for our learning system. And we now have created an in-person option for all of our elementary families. So a big shout out to all 15 of our elementary schools. We know that these first few days may be a little challenging as students and teachers get re-acclimated to the school and classroom environment. We also know that the concurrent teaching may be a bit clunky at first. I want our teachers and students to know that we don't expect perfection as we begin this important process. I am confident that our ISD teachers will become very skilled in this form of hybrid teaching, just as they have so masterfully improved the remote teaching and learning process. So this is an exciting day, and I just love it when I see pictures of happy kids walking back into our schools. And I got to see a number of those today. So that is a good, it's a good day for us in that regard. And as it was referenced by some in the public input, and as you know from the message that we sent out Tuesday, we did have to push our 612 student return date out past the original target of March 29th. However, I am very pleased that we reached an agreement with our teachers' union, the Issaquah Education Association, on an April 15th return date for our middle and high school students. The two sides continue bargaining, the secondary hybrid return MOU, but I'm confident that we will reach an agreement that will allow us to finish the last three months of the year with an in-person option for our secondary students in keeping with the governor's emergency proclamation from March 12th. More details about this plan will be forthcoming as the details are worked out collaboratively with our union partners. Kind of staying in the secondary realm here, I'm quite, this is exciting, but I'm quite optimistic based on conversations we have recently had with the management of T-Mobile Park, that we will be able to hold our comprehensive high school graduations live and in person at T-Mobile Park on Friday, June 11th. Yeah, that's pretty exciting. There are still details to be worked out, and things can change during a pandemic. But again, we are optimistic that we will get to celebrate the class of 2021, just as we have done for graduating classes over the last 20 years for, that was, and of course, only interrupted last year for the class of 2020 by the pandemic. So stay tuned for more information. I know there's probably a lot of questions about how many tickets and what, those of us who have done a lot of graduations might have questions about what the configuration will be, and we're asking all of those questions now. And the folks at T-Mobile Park have been really good to work with as well. So we're excited for that. We are still waiting to hear some more plans for Gibson Eck's graduation, but I'm also confident that we'll be able to hold a graduation ceremony appropriate for that group of graduating students as well, like Simone, who spoke earlier here tonight, and one of our board members' children. So that's, I view all of these things as, we are, as to quote Keith Henning from the Principal of Skyline High School, phasing back towards normal. I feel that that's, and I believe that that does provide hope. I did want to share also some information related to increasing numbers of secondary students with an in-person option, because even as we plan and prepare for the in-person option for all 612, six through grades 12 students, we are hosting increasing numbers of students on our campuses for in-person support. During the past two Wednesdays, we've provided an in-person support for some 275 high school students who have experienced some challenges during remote learning resulting in possible failing grades. We're also offering in-person services to our McKinney-Vento or students living in transition housing as well, both at the middle and high school level. Our middle school Fitness with Friends program, I want the Board to know that since starting our Fitness with Friends program at the middle schools, we have had 269 middle school students approved to participate, and another 100 or so expressing interest. Again, big thanks to all the coaches and supervisors for the work on both this program and the high school athletic teams in which hundreds of high school students are getting to participate. I truly believe that all of these opportunities for our students, as well as clubs and other opportunities that are being made available, go a long way towards helping our students feel hopeful, improve their physical and mental well-being, as we phase back towards a more normal and traditional school experience. I did want to touch a little bit, though, too, on the fact that we have, and I've shared this with the Board, we have seen some more cases of COVID in our schools. As you might imagine, now with thousands of students taking advantage of in-person opportunities and hundreds of more staff working on our campuses, we have seen and experienced an increase in some COVID cases. Having said that, the numbers are still very manageable, and as a result of the excellent work of our staff and that our staff and students are doing to implement COVID mitigation procedures, we are not experiencing an increase in community spread as a result of these activities. And I know that that has been something that was very important to the Board, that whatever we were doing was not going to lead to increased community spread of COVID in our community. We are not seeing that. That, of course, has been a primary goal, to increase our in-person opportunities, but to do so in a manner that doesn't increase community spread. This is, again, a place where I have to give a lot of gratitude to Assistant Superintendent Lisa Heckman for leading our system through this important learning work. Lisa and our building-based COVID supervisors have done excellent work investigating suspected COVID cases, contact tracing on confirmed cases, working with public health, and communicating with impacted families when situations arise. I know often there is a desire for people to have a lot of information about these. We do update our website with numbers of confirmed cases and suspected. But I do want people to understand that when we are contact tracing, we're asking, we are tracking into people's lives, and it would not be appropriate for us to always, to be able to share some of the information that we learned through that process. But you can rest assured that when we do when we do have a suspected case, or certainly a confirmed case, people move into action. And as a result, when we have had cases in classrooms, we are not seeing spread in that classroom. And I'm very, that, I'm very pleased with that. And again, I think that the mitigation strategies, that's proof that they're working, and why we can continue to do this and expand our in-person opportunities. I would say, though, to everybody, it is important, and our community rates continue to be low. And so we can be, we can be proud of the work that we've done as a community. Just a reminder to continue to wear your face coverings and hand hygiene and washing and health attestations, just continue to do the things we've been doing that prove that they work. I did want to make a reference, too, to, as President Weaver said when she was sharing at the beginning of the meeting where Dr. Gallagher was, today was yet another day of our vaccination center at Isqwa Middle School. Thank you again, Dr. Gallagher, our Director of Nursing, Dr. Karen Thies, and all the staff and volunteers who are making this happen. What a great thing that we are, a service that we are doing, not just for our educators, but really for educators throughout our region. As someone who drove to Auburn to get my first COVID vaccine dose on March 4, I am thrilled that I will be getting my second dose at IMS tomorrow. It feels kind of special to me, given that I'm the former principal of Isqwa Middle School, that I get to go there and do that. And as I said, I'm also proud of the fact that the Isqwa School District and our vaccination center has not only vaccinated ISD employees, but also education employees from neighboring school districts, private schools, preschools in our region, and other educational partners. I just can't say enough good things about the effort that those responsible for making this happen have done. So again, thank you. And then finally, and this is at the end, because this was so late breaking in my day today, I did want to acknowledge the governor's statement from earlier today, allowing for districts to adopt the new CDC physical distancing rule, moving from a six-foot distance down to a three-foot distance in some cases. I will admit, I haven't had an opportunity to read exactly what the governor said, but I am encouraged that this is another step towards us eventually getting back to our pre-pandemic schooling. I'm sure we'll be having lots of conversations about this change with our labor partners. But I'm sure, and I'm sure that there will be much more to come on this topic. But I know that that was kind of hot off the presses just from this afternoon. So as I said, I'm sure we'll have lots more to say about that. But so a lot has been happening as it relates to the educational services that we're providing. I, just as I said, two weeks ago at our meeting, too, I don't want people to think that we are not supporting our fully remote learners. We continue to support those teachers in classrooms as well. It's a complicated system that we're operating right now, but I think I'm really proud of how people are stepping up and really trying to make a good experience, good learning experience for our students. So if there are questions, or anything more that you need, or the staff and I are here to take any more.
Okay, so I think what I will do, what we've done in the past, is I will take public input now, and then we will go to board questions. So if, I don't have any public in the room, so if there is any public input from the Zoom, this would be the time to raise your hand. Wow. Oh, there's one. I knew there was going to be some public input. So it looks like Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis? Oh, there you are.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am Jen Davis, and I teach at Apollo. And I just, I wanted the board to hear my experience today. I've never spoken at a board meeting. I have a lot of concerns about how this is going to work for the rest of the school year for our remote learners. I have 15 students, 12 are boys, in my classroom, and then I have 10 online. And it's really hard. It's really hard to manage both sides. And I just, I don't feel like it's equitable at all. My kids in my classroom, three of them are on IEPs, and they need an additional person in my classroom, and they're not able to have that because I have 15 students in my classroom. So there can't be another adult in there. My sound echoed all day. My document camera was upside down. And these are all of, all things that the union was assured that would work for us as of today, and they didn't. And it's really, it's scary for me to think about how this is going to work moving forward, because today went so poorly. And I know that I'm not alone, because I have been a teacher in this district for 11 years, and I have a lot of colleagues that have said the same thing. And so I just, I wanted the board to hear that, because it's not, it didn't go well.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Heidi Erickson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just want to address some of the things I've heard from teachers. First of all, I'm not 100% sure that the school board, which is our only forum for parents in the community, is the right place for a lot of them to speak up, since they have so many other forums. However, what I would also like to address is that I started a brand new job in June, in the middle of COVID. I have not met in person over 95% of the people I work with. I had to learn Teams, which was a brand-new platform for me. And guess what? I lead a global team, and I am purposely perfectly capable of doing it. The first day was scary. My computer didn't work. But guess what? It's fine. And the problem we have is that this district has waited so long to get over these hurdles, that they are unable to actually show the growth mindset they have been teaching to my children for the last decade. The problem I have with this behavior is that we have teachers who think that there being a bad representation for women, the nurses who have been risking their lives are a great representation of women, and we all see that. So if you want to represent women well, you want to support women, get back to work so we can too, and our children can be educated. We need you to do your job. We need our kids to not be left behind. The football, I am extremely sad for these children. They needed that. There's so many things they need. And we are one of, what, 20% of schools still not in person? And the risk of not being in person next year? I'm writing the governor every day, because I think the only way we're going to get the union and our board, who, by the way, thank you for the parent who recognized the fact that our board has absolutely no control of the union or the school. But the point of the matter is, I have to write the governor every day, demanding, please mandate, please mandate, because guess what? We won't go back to school in the fall. We won't go full-time. We won't go in-person. And you're right, the teachers who've talked about remote not working, it doesn't work. It doesn't work if you're at the front of the classroom, or if you're sitting in front of your computers. It doesn't work. It doesn't engage 75% of the kids. And dropout rates are going to go through the roof. I think that the problem we have here is people are only thinking of themselves. And the them that they're thinking of is their momentary uncomfortableness in a classroom. And I'm sorry, so many other people rely on you.
You have two minutes. So thank you very much for your input. Malia Wilkinson. Malia?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you. Oh, there you are.
I'm trying. There we go.
There you go.
Hi, yeah. So I was actually going to say something very different, but I am going to actually just say this, that I know there are a lot of teachers listening, and I'm glad they're here. This is the right forum for them, so they can hear what's going on. And I wanted to say to the teachers and the staff, that I fully support whatever it is you need to make yourselves feel safe and be safe. I do not think it's commendable to think that what we need to have as role models is women putting their lives in danger. That isn't what we need. What we need is self-care and taking care of ourselves, and making sure our situations are safe, and we're all doing the best that we can. And so that's, I've changed my message, but that's what I wanted to say tonight, and to say that to that young woman who spoke in the beginning, we hear you. And we are sorry that this is all happening, and that our country is going through this, and our district, and our state, and we're all in this together. And we're going to do the best we can to support you, and to get our kids back in school while keeping you safe, and doing whatever it takes to make that happen. So yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, after that last person, that teachers all know we're listening, and we're really trying to be there for you. So please know that. And I'm just sending out my love to all of the educators.
Okay, thank you very much. Hands keep popping up. So I'm going to take the three hands that are up, and then we're going to move on, because otherwise this kind of keeps rolling out. Camille Wright.
Hi, yes, my name is Camille Wright, and I teach in the school district at Maywood Middle School. And first of all, I would like to say thank you to Superintendent Thiele for your words of support with regard to the concurrent model. And I would like to applaud all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers for starting today using that concurrent model with a not fully established plan in place for them to teach, which is my concern for when secondary goes in. I'm really worried, you know, we've been talking about, and we've been told as we're supposed to go back in, that we will be doing this concurrent model. And the board, the district has said, you know, we're going to have a plan in place. We're going to make it easy for you teachers, but there isn't a plan. And I'm worried that this is gonna, this is putting a lot of undue stress on us as the teachers, as the students, and then along the lines, parents are going to be frustrated as well. I would please encourage the district to think about the pace at which they are providing some sort of plan or example of how they're going to be teaching the professional development that we'll need as teachers to get this going, and to be as successful as our community is hoping that we will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary McGuire Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I am the parent of a third grader at Newcastle Elementary, as well as a sixth and eighth grader at Maywood Middle School. And first, I will say the teachers have done a great job getting my third grader back at school. His demeanor has changed dramatically, and I can't wait to see that happen with my sixth and eighth grader. We also had a PTSA meeting, and I'm on the board for Newcastle. And I found out that there's a waiting list in many of the classes for kids to get back in school. So what, I would urge you to please consider not having to go back and rebargain every single MOU that has came up when it comes to this. I personally know a boy who, his mom's been in the hospital for nine months. He was told he was going to have to change fourth grade classes, and he was one of two students who was going to have to change because there were too many kids in his classroom. So if you can put, or even the teacher who spoke about not being able to have an EA come in to help with the IEP. They changed the guidelines today for the state. Please, you don't have to go to max capacity in every room, but until you can come up with something else with the union, please consider on a case-by-case basis, these kids who are on the waitlist to get in, who really, really need it, and also take into account, like the teacher said, they need help in their classroom, put a couple of kids closer together, and let that EA come in and help. Because anything we can do to help get these kids in class is beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last person I'm taking is Marcel Waldman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I was not going to talk tonight either, but after that teacher spoke, it really hit my heart. And I think after Malia, I think is her name, the parent that said how the mental health of our teachers and the self-care of our educators, and support staff, and the staff in our buildings is also as important as they are the ones that are educating our children, whether they are remote, or they are in the hybrid model. And I think most of all, when I keep hearing our teachers being akin to nurses and doctors, it frustrates me. They did not take an oath to take care of the sick. They took an oath to take care and educate our children, and their social-emotional well-being, educate them in all the subject areas. And I do not think that our educators signed up to be nurses and doctors. They signed up to be teachers. So I just wanted to say that. And again, I was not planning to speak, but that teacher got to my heart. So, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, my mic wasn't on. I'm taking questions from the board. Anne.
I'll ask one. So tell us more about the training that the teachers had for the concurrent, what do we call it, concurrent live streaming?
Livestreaming.
Concurrent live streaming.
Yeah.
It's more about the training the teachers were able to have.
Yeah, and I, over here, to my right, I see Executive Director Melish making his way up. But I did want to thank you for that question, Director Moore, because, again, I just want to reiterate to our teachers, we do not expect perfection as we come out of the gate with this new teaching modality. And I don't believe we ever said it was going to be easy. I truly want our teachers and our students to know that this is likely to be a little bit clunky. You know, hopefully, we didn't have a lot of experiences like we heard from the fifth grade teacher at Apollo. But we can overcome all of that. And I just have tremendous faith in the ability of our teachers, like teachers in many districts across our region, to be able to do this. And I know, and I know that Rich is going to speak to kind of some of the ways, and the training doesn't just stop either. We will continue as the teachers get in there and experience this. They're going to learn new things, and new problems, and we're going to have to problem-solve with our teachers to do this. But I know we can do this. I know our teachers can do this. But I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that, I recognize, none of the, and we're going to talk about this in Executive Limitation 14, none of these models are the ideal model. The ideal model in my mind is an in-person, five-day-a-week, all-day school, schooling with the amazing teachers that we have, engaging in activities with our students, and them engaging with their counterparts, their students, their colleagues in the classrooms. So we, I just, again, I want to be clear. We know it's not going to be perfect. I know they're going to improve it as time goes on. But the act of being able to go to school has tremendous value for our students. Getting on a school bus and being greeted with that smiling bus driver behind their mask, arriving on that campus and being greeted, and seeing other students your age and classmates, and maybe people you've only seen in Zoom calls before. There is tremendous value in that, I believe, for the students' social-emotional wellness, their mental wellness, the idea of getting back into the routine of school. And so I just, that has real value. Absolutely, our primary mission is about educating students. And I know we're going to get better at doing that in these modalities. But anyway, so thank you, Rich. If you could share some of the ways that we've been working with and supporting our teachers, and plan to continue to support our teachers as we go forward. I don't think that that mic is on, Rich. Yeah.
There you go. Better?
That's.
Awesome. Okay. Sorry about that. So we did some listening sessions with teacher leaders to prepare for the professional development, because we really wanted to target where their questions were. And what we found was about half the questions were about how to navigate the safety protocols. When can they, there were lots of misconceptions around, kind of like, how do we, how and when can we interact with? how and when can we interact with students and what ways? Do we have to always stay six feet apart? When, how can we do small groups, things like that? So we did a lot of um, uh, support. And I'm going to say we, I'm going to, I'm going to let you know that this was principals developing our plans and doing a safety protocol and safety uh, professional development with their staff in those three days. Um, as, as well as what T L S is doing. So when I say we, I mean the district. And um, so there was, there was uh, safety, safety training around that so that they could get all their questions out about how they could interact with students and be able to, to know what the rules and how to navigate that would be. Then there was some optional uh, video training for the technology because the other half of the questions were not so much about how to do the instruction, but how to navigate the technology in this environment. And so, so the focus really was on, on showing some videos around how it looks in the classroom using the, using the technology they have. So we did some mock-up videos using I S D technology and I S D learning spaces to show how to navigate the equipment and things to think about, things like camera angles and where you stand and how to tape the floor so you know that if you get teaching, you can stand in a place where the students can see you. So there's lots of little tips on that. And then from there, going into breakout sessions to have more interaction so that they could ask their follow-up questions of that. So that was really the bulk of the, the emphasis and the request that we received for professional development. We have had help desks and um, kind of on-demand options to get, to get personal support. And we will continue to monitor what questions are coming up, our, our echoey rooms or a document camera issues, a common occurrence and what we need to serve. Um, I thought I saw maybe.
Yeah, I think Assistant Superintendent Bongard popped in too. She may have a comment to make in this area.
Or maybe not.
Does she need to be unmute?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, I, I uh, just wanted to add that um, we, we also, as part of, for example, the M O U with uh, fourth and fifth grade, we, we also built into it um, three additional half-days that teachers uh, could access. Additional supports, trainings, work with their teammates on um, what's working, what's not, and problem solve with the idea in mind that you, you really don't know what you don't know or what questions you need to ask until you actually experience concurrent teaching. And so there, there are additional opportunities for our staff and our teachers uh, to continue learning and to um, get some of those bugs worked out.
Thank you. And I will add that we have created a resource of, of articles and models and videos and tips in a padlet for our elementary teachers so that, so that there's some on-demand resources that they can quickly add very much uh, as they run into the issues they need support with. And we will continue to reach out and, and try to help troubleshoot and help develop on the processes as they go. And I also, I do want to do one last shout-out. I'm sorry. I don't ever want to diminish at the elementary that we do have instructional coaches throughout who have been um, available to work uh, one-on-one with the teachers throughout this process as well. And that's, that's one of the, one of our most valuable resources there at the elementary because, because they have a relationship and they can jump in and know the situation exactly.
Thanks, Rich. Will a lot of this training, um, be stuff that you can also use for the six-twelve teachers? Or is their situation significantly different?
Yeah, we've been doing listening sessions and uh, Q and A and starting to develop those. Uh, some similar lines and some difference, differences in the secondary. A lot of questions right now, um, we can only answer partly because the M O U hasn't been fully developed. And some of the questions are about the conditions of teaching and the schedule and, and those are just questions that are hard to answer with certainty um, until we have an M O U. The um, absolutely, we're doing the same thing. We have put out some videos uh, that other districts are using for training. And um, and we are uh, working to bring in a couple of teachers who've been doing concurrent teaching so that there can be some live Q and A and then record that and put that out to teachers. And, and uh, so we're working with a, a couple of the districts where we've gone and visited to see if there's some teachers who would be willing to do a Q and A at the middle school and high school level so that teachers can plumb their experience. But I will say, we've already put out a video of teachers interviewing those teachers. So we, they can right now go and see Tohoma teachers asking the White River teachers those questions about their concurrent teaching experience. So those videos are out there right now.
Well, that's great. Harlan.
So, first of all, I just want to say to Ron and our leadership team, I really appreciate that we are able to have the opportunity to talk through the clunkiness.
Yeah.
I think those, that's a hurdle that was important to get over. You know, speaking even for the vaccine clinic. There was no question that two weeks ago, I was very frustrated when I walked in. Now, on day five of doing this, you know, we've gotten those things worked out, but we would have never been able to get through all the things that we couldn't actually forecast or do until we actually did. So I know that there is going to be those parts. And so my question is, is relevant things have been brought up both to us electronically and in person tonight. So I just have a list of questions. So one, a teacher, or several teachers had asked us about laptops. Are we really, as a district, saying that if a teacher wanted to use laptops in a classroom, that they're not allowed to?
No. To, to be simple, um, the four or five M O U, um, and Assistant Superintendent Bongard, I know this was a big issue for her, um, did put some limits on the use on, in person. But I want to be clear, we, you know, if teachers, there are times when it's appropriate for a student and maybe every student to, to have access. The, the concern we had was we didn't want to replicate a remote teaching experience simply in a different environment in the classroom. So there was a, um, in, if I recall the M O U correctly, and there's been a lot of M O Us. Um, we did say we wanted to limit the laptop used to five um, in, in a classroom. That's, that's uh, at the elementary level. Obviously, this had, none of this has been uh, worked out at the secondary level. But um, we do recognize that there are times when that needs to happen. However, again, what we didn't want was just to see every student um, in the elementary grades. And particularly, this was important to us at the younger grades because our K-three teachers, they're not using laptops um, in the classroom. And that was one of the concerns. And I see, Jody, I, I see you're there. Did you, I probably didn't articulate your position very well, Jody, so.
I want to respond to that first.
Yeah, please.
So I guess I would say, I guess I don't want, I, I wouldn't want any artificial capping of how many laptops could be used in a classroom because we don't want it in K-three because they're not teaching concurrent. And so four or five is teaching a concurrent livestream model. So I don't think that we should do anything that's going to limit the opportunity for innovation. And again, I think that's part of this is, sure, we've gone into ideas of other school districts, but we may have a teacher who, who masterfully does livestreaming and needs all their kids on it so they can integrate the kids at home in a better way. And so I don't think that we need to artificially say, no, you can't just because it sounds good.
Yeah, I, I believe there was something in them.
I need to know, reassure us that there's an opportunity for teachers to say, hey, this is my plan and this is why I'm doing it, rather than a blanket like, no.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to have twenty-four laptops in your classroom.
So I, I, again, and I think that there were, there are bargaining notes to speak just to what you were saying, Harlan, uh, Director Gallinger. So Jody, why don't you, can you clear this up for me a little bit?
Yeah, so, so we, we did say that we would make sure that there were um, in every classroom at least five um, uh, student laptops um, at all times for every fourth and fifth grade classroom. And then we also um, uh, agreed that we would also make available a laptop cart. Um, because um, yes, and, and uh, one of our members uh, of the I E A bargaining team actually, you know, shared that some of our new Amplify Science students need to be, you know, have access to the laptops for some pieces of that curriculum. And so, yes, every building will have, if, if teachers are doing a, a project where they want their students to have that access, um, that, that is available. Um, what, what we were trying to do as Superintendent Thiele was sharing and a lot of the feedback that we've received from our public uh, via emails. Um, we were all trying to balance the screen time while in person um, with opportunities for students to interact with one another because our folks, our, our families that chose in-person, we were clearly hearing, they wanted their kids to interact with one another, not through computers, but have conversations, discourse, share their, you know, those experiences of in-person where kids are talking to one another, sharing their thinking, um, modeling how they solve problems. Orally and um, uh, engaging again in that intellectual discourse, if you will, between one another.
I appreciate that and think that's totally valuable. I just think also, having run hybrid meetings for the past year, there is something to be said for having to integrate people more easily that are at home versus with people there in the room. And so I just want to make sure that our teachers have that opportunity, should that be their reason doing it, not just to do Zoom in the classroom. I, I agree with that intent. So my next question is uh, probably for Rich. So for this, what supports are we providing for struggling teachers? Meaning either, you talked about the technology supports, but meaning, do we have E As to deploy to help with, I mean, a classroom that you have ten boys and two girls? Like, let's just be honest, that's going to be a much more challenging classroom than if you had ten girls and two boys. So how are we supporting those types of?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, our first line in our district has been our instructional coaches that are uh, deployed at all of our elementary schools in terms of supporting those, those struggling teachers. We also have some T O Ss who are available to go in and, and provide uh, side-by-side support at those times in terms of developing strategies. So in terms of supporting them with instructional practices and modeling and things, things of that nature, the professional learning and development, we have leaned towards our T O Ss and coaches. In terms of, when you start asking about paraprofessionals and such, I, I, that, that, I'd have to defer to others, but we haven't, we haven't allocated, to my knowledge, paraprofessionals to help with struggling teachers. Um, I'd, I'd have to uh, ask more of what your, what your intention and thought around that is.
Well, and I would note too, that the principal, as the instructional leader in the building, is also another resource. And I know many of our principals love to get in there and do demonstration lessons and roll their sleeves up too. So um, yeah, and, and as you know, um, Director Gallinger, that was a big impetus for us to put those in-building, embedded uh, people in the building. Not just have people that can be deployed out from here, but an actual instructional coach that they have access, a colleague that works with them in their building um, as well. And then I know that there are times when, as a former principal, I had to direct certain resources if I had a problem spot, a, a class or um, you know, and sometimes, sometimes it may not be the signing of a, a paraprofessional to the classroom, but it, it might be something is um, even my knowledge of it and my spending more time in that classroom or more time with that individual teacher, um, problem solving and troubleshooting even at the end of the day. Um, so um, there are ways we can do that. I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Heckman had a point that she wanted to make because she popped up on the screen there. Yeah, so I miss.
I did it, that's okay. I, I, just in talking about um, in human resources, um, as Rich and Ron have both mentioned, there, we, we can also not just do pairs, but we have also put in other certificated staff in order to assist uh, with teachers who are struggling. And at the secondary level, we've taken a proactive stance by using the professional learning coaches with those that are in their first uh, three years of teaching with us. Um, the coaches have already delivered a professional development on concurrent learning in order to prepare for some of the transitions. And they've worked uh, throughout these last ten months on a daily basis with teachers, both that have requested the help, but also that administrators have said, hey, could you please uh, make sure that you, you get in and give some assistance in this give and take, not just in that digital world, but also in looking and knowing that we were coming back to in-person. Again, given in this last year that some of those teachers would not necessarily have had the opportunity to student teach the year before. So the professional learning coaches have been doing some very proactive work as well in preparation for the secondary coming back.
Thank you.
Sydney, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of comments. So I guess for me, uh, what I wonder about is on the preparedness for six-twelve return. And that was helpful, what Lisa just went through, but I guess maybe I'm asking more, I'm interested in a more practical um, hands-on solution. So do we have the ability, are we considered the ability of actually setting up physical classrooms in buildings with the, with the tech that people will need to access when they return to school? So that they can be allowed to um, demo and play with that today. There, there's a physical, um, I think the physical space, the physical stressors, the hardware itself would be, would be helpful to build on, I'd say the coaching or watching videos of other people. I think that's at least what I heard in some of the comments earlier, when I'm in the room and you're adding on the additional um, stressor. So I, now that we, since we have a, a date by which we know we're going back and we have time, um, sometime at least, can we um, at least offer that as some sort of a tactile experience in, in the secondary buildings?
Yes, so the I T department has been setting up the technology um, now and have been working through that. Part of the problem they're wrestling with is that a lot of the technology is in people's homes because they're teaching from the homes. One of the recommendations that we've put out there for teachers who are nervous about the physical manipulation of the technology is next Wednesday to move your teaching station from your living room or wherever that is, back to the classroom and teach remotely for a few days from the classroom. Get comfortable with the physical setup, start playing with it. Um, don't wait, don't wait. And it's almost like we call it doing a dry run because you don't have, you don't have kids in the room. But you can start kind of modeling what it looks like and feels like to teach from the front of the classroom. Um, some teachers will, some teachers are not very nervous about the tech and some are more nervous about the tech. So it really is. And I, and I do want to say one thing. We are leaning into the professionalism of our teachers. So what we haven't found is them saying, I'm not sure how to teach the science. I'm not sure how to teach the math this way. It really is, we've got wonderful educators. And, and so helping navigate the technology and giving them the visual and the physical opportunities to do that is really important. So yes, um, there are classrooms that have the technology in them. Um, uh, especially those classrooms where teachers are already teaching from their classroom. I'm sure they're, they're already using almost the entire physical setup that we'll be using in concurrent teaching.
In our previous M O Us too, Director Mullins, we, you know, had built in some prep days prior to the day that they actually return. So I, well, we haven't, but as we've noted, we don't have that M O U yet. I, I would anticipate something like that. I, I know if I was still in the classroom, I would certainly want to come in and teach from that space and practice in that space before kind of D-Day, if you will, when the students arrive. So I'm glad to hear we're, we're talking and thinking about that as well.
And I do know our executive directors of, of middle school and high school have been working with the principals on kind of how to use those three days. And, and last I, last I heard, front-loading those with getting the technology set up and start practicing on the Monday so that you have three full, as, as much of those three days to be playing with the technology, um, has been a high priority.
Yeah, I guess my point is this time, I mean, if I'm honest, those three days have historically been, we didn't know what the date was and the three days sort of were a bit of brinksmanship at the end. And the opportunity we have this time is knowing the date and having it further out is to be, um, I love that you said you've offered it. I, I think we should, just hearing some of the stressors and having worked in the space long enough to know that is what is going to reduce the stressors, that is what's going to help you figure out your setup in your classroom, your document camera, your extra, whatever. And so I just want to make sure, um, because we have more time this time, um, that that's a key differentiator and that teachers are aware that that's the key differentiator because the, the tech isn't the thing, right? It's, it's the experience with the tech.
Yes.
And then I have a segue. If someone, I have to go, I want to go elsewhere in this.
I, I have, I have lots more comments too, so I want to give everyone.
Oh, go for it. Okay, so go with mine then. I guess I, I would like to better understand, just to get back to the um, the, the athletics decision. I think, I think, I guess I have more clarity on what we said our decision-making criteria was for transmission in schools. The athletics is obviously a, another big section. I think my own kid is at I H S at basketball right now. Um, I actually, what is the decision-making? Who, who is the decision-making body? And how does that happen on, on pausing the programs? And what is our, our voice there and our ability to influence?
Um, I, I'm sure Assistant Superintendent Heckman will weigh in again, but I will say that when I got the call from her, um, it was reported that she had received the call, I think from uh, Mount Si or from the Snoqualmie Valley School District. They were essentially through their contact tracing, having to inform us. And then you begin to work with um, Public Health of Seattle, King County. So Lisa, maybe if you could kind of just, I mean, we have this real-world example that we're work, you're working through right now, at least for another twenty-four hours. And then you're going to get to pass it off.
Um, well, and, and Principal McCormick and Athletic Director Luke Andy have really done a lot of uh, the legwork necessary. So yes, uh, the Mount Si team communicated with, administrators communicated with us. the Mount Si team communicated with, uh, administrators, communicated with us last night. Um, and provided the guidance that they were receiving from Public Health of Seattle, King County. And what the parameters were that Public Health was laying down for them and, and their team. Um, how our team was influenced at first was the proximity to the individuals who were uh, tested positive and symptomatic. So, um, and how much they had played in the game, where they had played in the game. Um, and so at first we had limited it to a portion of the team and continued to be able to move forward on the advice of, uh, Public Health. So that you know, Public Health put out, uh, Mount Si's entire team, the referees, the ball boys, the chain gang, all the photographers on the field, um, and, uh, the athletic trainers. We were trying to do a more narrow approach of, okay, who would be in touch with, uh, the young men that were, uh, testing positive. And unfortunately, um, my understanding is, is that Mount, the Mount Si has had a couple of additional cases, which then expands the ripple because of proximity and for how long during a game. We do that on, so when we get that type of information, um, if it's something that is not routine like this one, we end up communicating with Public Health of Seattle, King County for advice and direction. Um, sometimes arguing and persuasion so that, uh, as the parents and community members were asking if we advocate, um, and we do, because we happen to know our, how our facilities are set up, what our interactions and directions that we have given to our staff in order to do our very best at minimizing, um, at minimizing the impact either on the athletic field or ultimately that will be in our classrooms. So it's advice from, advice from King County, uh, Public Health, who also have the ability to give us direction and demand that we take action.
Have they demanded that we take action to shut our football team down? Because if they have not, then it is a district decision. Is that not correct?
Uh, they've given us the advice to do the steps that we have taken so far. They have not, they have not demanded, no, but they've given us the general advice.
And, and I, I apologize because again, some of this is new and this is not normal for me to ask a question like this during a board meeting, but what is the most recent, um, advice and situation where we're at? I know this is a very fluid situation and I, I did also hear that they've had more students now test, are more athletes test positive than when we originally heard. So what, what is, where are we at in that Lisa? What, what are, are we still in a contact tracing phase or what, what are, where are we at? If you could just update us?
Sure. So, so we've given a direction, uh, originally to the defensive line. Um, because that was the people in the closest proximity to the original cases that they were deemed, um, as close contacts and as a result, uh, needed to, to quarantine for 14 days. Um, if the direction was if the coaches had come beyond the close hashtag onto the field in order to interact with the team, Public Health was considering them to be, uh, close contacts as well. And that they would similarly need to quarantine, not because they were in contact with our boys, but because of how according to Public Health, they were considering, uh, they were considering the field. Subsequently, I believe that there have been, uh, case, positive cases on the offensive side of their ball, which then, I'm sorry, on the defensive side of the ball, which then influenced our offensive side. Um, the guidance right now for, from Public Health is for a 14 day quarantine. We are actually hoping that everybody's going to remain asymptomatic, uh, test negative, and that we would be able to have them, uh, return in 10 days.
So have we had any symptomatic players or positive players on this squad team?
Uh, not yet, no, not to my knowledge. I think that they, I think we, they were busily testing. We got the notice yesterday. I believe that they were busily testing today. Maybe tomorrow. I, I don't know what their schedule of testing was.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems that we should do what makes sense and the 10-day threshold that the CDC has said is, it's 10, not 14. And, but the average person gets it at 5.5 days. So it seems like we should be testing everyone tomorrow. And anyone that tests negative, there's, I just don't see why they shouldn't return to play. And if, if they tested the Bellevue site at the Bellevue College, they'll have their results before they go to bed tomorrow night. So I, I just don't see why we should not be following the science and doing that. Cause we have to do what's safe, but we also have to do what is grounded in what we know. So our students can return as quickly as possible, because this is not going to be the first time or last time that this happens. So I, I don't know where Public Health Seattle, King County gets the 14-day thing, because that's not even in CDC practice.
Uh, their guidance clearly says 14, 14 days graduated to 10, graduated to seven, depending upon, um, circumstances. So I, I don't know, Director Gallinger, it, those are the timelines that we have been working with.
And without questioning you, I absolutely believe that you're following what you're told. I just disagree with them.
Fair point then. I disagree.
Are we, Harlan, are we meeting with them tomorrow morning?
No, we're meeting with, uh, Superintendent Richtall tomorrow morning.
I do, I do, and just, just so that you know, as part of the process and the follow-up, um, I believe that, uh, Principal McCormick and her team were going to check one more time with Mount Si, do a double check with, uh, the athletes, et cetera. I was going to do another double check with Public Health, um, just so that we might have an update of moving into the weekend and what that meant.
That would be great. And I did see, uh, Principal McCormick, McCormick pop up there. I don't know if she had a comment she wanted to make or, oh, there's Andrea.
Hi, I'm here. Sorry, my phone, it wasn't planning on speaking, but, um, yeah, I think just for the people who are still on the line listening, we too want our athletes people to play and just like, uh, Assistant Superintendent Heckman mentioned, we are doing everything to communicate with the families, the best course of, of action to be back for our last, uh, home game on April 2nd. And we're, it's about the, there were four people on the field at the game on Saturday that were in the symptomatic zone. So as Assistant Superintendent Heckman said, it's that 14-day period unless we get those negative tests. So we are really optimistic that our players will test. We've communicated to them today and to those who couldn't get today, tomorrow. So we should know by Monday, um, whether we're ready to go and bring them all back to practice on Tuesday. So we're, we're crossing our fingers and super optimistic because we too want them to have those last few days and opportunity to play.
Do I have more questions from the board?
Yes, but I, I want other people to have opportunity.
No, I think you're up.
Sweet. I have lots of questions and probably because I wasn't at the executive session, so I apologize. So it really pertains to reopening in, in middle school. Before I get to that, uh, we had been told a month ago that middle school sports would be starting and it's the end of March and I still haven't heard as a middle school parent. So.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I know the Fitness with Friends program has started. I don't know about middle school sports and I don't know if Executive Director, um, Morris is here. Yeah.
Like what was?
I guess I would need an update on the status of middle school sports as well.
Was track because that's the most popular and outdoor one. That's what we were told.
Yeah.
Coming in.
Um, thank you, Director Gallinger. Um, yeah, currently we're running our Fitness with Friends program at our schools. Um, Superintendent Thily reported, um, I believe we're up over 200 students participating. Um, a hundred more, um, you know, the program is growing. It's, it's started right now. Um, in a typical school year, track would start after spring break. And so we are currently planning to pick up that season. Um, as it normally would sit in, um, the school schedule, which would be right after spring break. Um, and we're working kind of to align that with the date that was announced for secondary return. So we're planning kind of around the secondary return and then starting that, um, middle school track season um, shortly after break. But the Fitness with Friends program is running, um, right now.
In a typical year though, aren't we also advertising for signing up for track and field at this point in the year? Like, I don't think we typically wait till after spring break to do that.
No, no, we typically would have a two-week signup. And so, um, quite honestly, with the announcement of the date for return, um, I'm working with my team to plan, uh, when that track season, when we would kick that off. If we would try to kick that off on the 12th of April concurrently, or if we may back that up just a little bit and extend that season on the June end, um, to try to still get the full time, but also being cognizant of the transition of returning to in-person and, um, essentially trying to give students and staff a chance to kind of start that migration back before the program starts up.
Oh, I agree. That migration is going to be important, but I think families probably need to know that, hey, there's this opportunity that may be coming. You may, might need to start a planning to adjust your schedules. So if they don't have any idea and it gets sprung on them after spring break, they're probably not going to be very happy.
Sure.
Sounds like we need a message to go out prior to the break. Yeah.
Um, and what we've done, um, well, a couple of nice things with the Fitness with Friends program. Um, first of all, getting opportunities for students to participate at school, um, and with each other, um, has been great, but our staff is trained up for our, um, uh, final forms process, which, um, is the process for which we sign kids up and, uh, do all the kind of behind the scenes logistics. So we're ready for that. But yeah, we're ready to advertise. So we can start pushing that out. Absolutely.
Great. Um, we, you guys might have presented this already, but can you send us a spreadsheet for what percent of students in fourth and fifth grade returned to the buildings by building like you did?
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, I don't have that. Yeah, we can certainly do that. I'll make a note of it.
Be helpful to see.
Right. You mean the one that's broken down?
By building?
Yep.
Do what they said it already?
No, no, they haven't. But that's what I'm ensuring that it's the one that has a little bit of detail.
So when I think about return, first of all, I, I, I know that it's complex and I appreciate that it's probably better for planning purposes that you announced the date of April 15th. I'm going to publicly say I'm not thrilled about that. Uh, I, I don't know how we got to that date. Feel like we've been working really hard on the front end to do vaccinations for staff. And only to have that sort of can kicked down way farther, um, makes me feel that the work that we've done at its cloud middle school to be not as valued. That being said, I think it is an opportunity. The silver lining to me is had an MNOU been signed prior to today, it would have said for six feet physical distancing because that's what state we were in. In the era of Governor Inslee's remarks, I certainly don't expect any MOU to come in front of us that shows anything different than three feet, which is what our state has adopted. What I also hope for is that we follow the intent of his guidance, which says, you know, to the greatest extent possible. So certainly it's mandating two days a week. The three feet allows us to do two feet, to, to do two days a week in a classroom with, you know, the 75% cohort, I mean, up to, right? We know 75% of our secondary students want to go back. So I don't see why you couldn't do a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday thing for two days a week for that cohort of students in a classroom, because three feet gives you that flexibility. What my ask would be that 14 days later, assuming that a particular high school doesn't have demonstrated any transmission that's notable, that you would move to four days a week, right? The risk doesn't change if you start with that cohort of kids in Monday and Tuesday. And you continue to demonstrate that you don't have risk, then going from two days a week to four days a week, it's not like you've magically doubled the risk. It's the same kids in front of the teacher. So I don't see why that we shouldn't. And more importantly, our job this spring, because I think a lot of parents have asked, like, why are you even bothering right now? It's because we need to set the stage for next year. And this is part of that, because I don't think it's going to change and we're going to have to figure out lunch. So lunch is still very clearly six feet. So while classrooms are three feet, it's very clear the guidance is still six feet for lunch. So our, our staff collectively are going to figure out how creatively they're going to do lunches at IHS and Liberty and Skyline where there's hundreds and hundreds of students are going to have to find a place to eat lunch. And so again, part of that clunkiness is we need to overcome those hurdles now. So next September, it's something that is more fluid and seamless. Which brings me to K5. And after we get six 12 going, and I know that our bargaining team and Natalie's been incredible and I'm sure she's like, what did she ever get herself into? But thank you for that. But I hope that we revisit K5. And because I think we need to align K5 to the work and the guidance, because it was done so long ago and we've learned so much that as we look to prepare for fall, I would see a sequence of three things that I would love to see happen. One, that the guidance gets changed from six feet to three feet for our, our K5. Or I, maybe even for five, it already is. I haven't seen the MOU for four or five. Uh, two, that we move to full day because we need, again, it's about preparing for the fall. So we need to move from our half to full days. The same reason about why we're doing lunches. If, if we are going to do lunches in our middle school and high school, and the reason why we're not doing lunches in elementary is because the fear of spread. Well, obviously if we're doing it in our older students who are of higher risk, then why aren't we doing it in our younger students who have lower risk? So it seems like that to me doesn't make sense or pass a sniff test for why we're doing what we're doing. And then the, the third thing would be sometime in the late spring for the opportunity for families who have opted out to be able to have a chance to opt in. And the, the six feet to three feet would lay the groundwork for that to do that. And I knew that would be hugely complex and hugely challenging and hugely a big pain in the, but again, I think that's critical for preparing for the fall because part of preparing for fall is not just preparing our buildings. It's not just preparing our staff. It's preparing our families. And so if we don't give those, then those opportunities, because we know that if our elementary family is only 50% chose to go back in person for elementary, but 75% for secondary. I mean, we have 50% of families who don't feel comfortable right now. And I think they deserve the opportunity this spring to see what it's like and to have that opportunity. So those are the things that my hopes and dreams as I look towards between these next 50 some days of the school year that we have left.
Yeah.
Because it really is about being able to have a really successful fall.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing I hope from a special education standpoint, we were very intentional to vaccinate our ACT students and their families as well as LRC two students aged 16 and older and their families. So they could get more in-person direct learning. So I hope that our team on both sides of the table take advantage of that. This board has been very committed to our students, part of this from educational justice, to give them the opportunity for inpatient learning. And I don't think you can do an ACT program remotely. Maybe they've been able to do it. It just doesn't seem like knowing what they are trying to accomplish in those critical four years. This is something that has to be essential and essential in person.
Yeah. I can assure you that, uh, Dr. Bailey is a strong advocate for that position and as, as we all are. And that it is, um, and again, we're still in this kind of bargaining, you know, kind of process right now. But, um, I guess I will just speak for myself as superintendent. We have a desire to see our special needs students in full days all week. And that could be a group, and, and if we can't get there with the broader population, that's a population. We believe we should be providing that opportunity as quickly as we can. I, and, and I appreciate, um, your comments, Director Gallinger. I appreciate that I and the team, the bargaining team can hear them. Um, because I agree in part that the, the idea of taking advantage of an opportunity as we get in and, and we're experiencing school like we know is already happening at, you know, quite, for quite a while now at the, the K3 level and started today at four or five. To be open-minded enough to, we can transition during these next 57 school days and, um, because I absolutely believe that we, this is critical for preparation for the fall. Cause the goal should be to have the fall look as close to normal schooling as we remember it prior to the pandemic as possible, because I believe that's the best educational, um, modality, if you will, that we can provide as a school system. And so that, that, you know, obviously we have to have partners in our labor groups to get there, but I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate that idea because, and we've been talking a lot about that internally as well.
Thank you. Anything else?
Marnie.
First of all, I've been kind of sitting and listening. I was listening to public comments and I felt the need that at some point I wanted to say, um, by the way, our teachers will not be getting back to work when we go concurrent. They've been working all year. And that comment was made and I cannot let it pass without saying and recognizing our teachers have been doing a lot. This is not something that they This is not something that they planned to do when they went through their teaching certification. And so, and I do feel like there's been this room to not honor the work of our teachers that are in that classroom. And I differentiate the challenges that a leadership of a union faces, trying to speak for our population, the work of our administrative staff to try to do what's best for students. But that doesn't mean that I want to belittle the work of the teacher that shows up every day, either on camera or goes into their classroom. I also wanted to say that we've had a lot of discussions. I know the public says, you're talking about the kids that are back in the classroom, in the building, but what about our remote kids? And we continue to work on that. And I think that I really appreciate that, especially with fourth and fifth, those teachers aren't going to forget their remote kids because they're doing both. And I am excited about that work. I feel for that teacher that didn't know, like, things are going wrong. My document camera is upside down and if I turn the paper the way that everyone can see it, I can't write on it. Technical issues can be resolved and I am confident of that. And that, yes, this is yet another challenge that this pandemic has thrown at the system. And I am encouraged by the can-do attitude of our administrative staff of teaching and learning to get in there and figure out how are we going to make this happen? And then the classroom teacher that gets in there. And at the end of the day, kids are learning. And that's my goal is that at the end of the day, kids are learning. I do appreciate hearing what Harlan is, the questions you're asking, especially preparing for the fall. I think now is the time to move forward. I had to write it down, Superintendent Thiele, because I really appreciated your phrasing of, what was it? Phase back towards normal.
I stole that from Principal Henick.
There you go. That just means good hire.
Yeah.
Because that's what this is. And so it's not going to be perfect. I remember when I got married, I know what's the point of saying that? When I got married, I thought, at the end of the day, we do all this planning around the wedding. And if at the end of the day I was married, it went well. Regardless of anything else that happened. And I think that's kind of, at the end of the day, if kids are learning, that's what we're looking for. And that's what this board is accountable for, is that in the system we're creating that students are learning. And I think that is the process that we're moving forward to. I definitely think moving to three feet is going to be impactful. I think that's what's going to provide us to be able to sell parents that are on those waiting lists. They can come back in is if we can do that. Certainly looking at, I don't know if that changed, if that changed or if anything's changed, the 15 people maximum in a classroom. And if it hasn't, that's probably something we need to discuss with Superintendent Raichdale tomorrow. Because that's hugely impactful. If you say that my student who's on an I E P is supposed to have an aide to assist him or her, that aide needs to be in the classroom, period. It is our legal obligation. And with April being Autism Awareness Month, as a parent of a child on the autism spectrum, that, when he didn't have his E A to help him, his parent professional to help him with his writing, which is what they were supposed to do, it affected everything he did. And so we are legally obligated with I E Ps. So if what this teacher's saying is true, she's got three students with an I E P and no parent professional that's required to be in there, we need to fix that immediately. Cannot let that stand. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I think we're already well behind. So thank you, everybody, for your comments and thank you Superintendent Thiele for the update. And yeah, by the next time we meet, we should have everybody in school.
Yes.
That's going to be exciting. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is something a little bit more fun. We get to name our new elementary school and new middle school. And I'm thinking about the appropriate parliamentary procedure here. And I think we should have a motion to initiate discussion, but don't panic because if you don't like the motion, it can be amended before we vote on it. So I am going to entertain a motion. Anne.
Okay, so I'm going to throw this out there. I move the board name Elementary 16 Cedar Trails Elementary and Middle School Six Cougar Mountain Middle School effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, and now we have discussion. And I'm going to say, although I thought it was Cedar Trails and it does seem to be Cedar Trail. I checked my notes from last meeting. It was, oh, we could ask Tara.
Yeah, I don't know because I know what Diane put in the agenda was Trail. So we do want to be clear that we get it named right. But Cedar Trail sounded better. I mean, no, the plural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do have the authority to tweet.
I want to ask Tara what she meant.
I'm pulling up the presentation from last time we got to meet with you guys. And for E 16, it is Cedar Trail Elementary, of course.
Singular.
It is singular.
Okay.
You can change that to Cedar Trails plural.
I know, we can do all kinds of things. I just wanted to know. I just wanted to know what you actually meant and make sure that we had it right before we thought about changing it.
Yes, the five names that went to our parent community for a vote was Cedar Trail Elementary, Lake Highlands Elementary, Mountain View Elementary, Mamish Elementary and Scenic View Elementary.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that clarification. And I will, I will start the conversation off by saying, I absolutely like Cedar Trail. I like Cedar Trails better, but that was my personal favorite for E 16. I could go a couple ways on Middle School Six. I appreciate Harlan's comments at the last board meeting about how Alpine didn't quite scratch the itch and the more I thought about that, that made sense. And I'm not a huge fan of Talis or Valor, but I would be happy with Cougar Mountain or Forest View. So that's my two cents. I will entertain other comments.
Well, I made the motion, so clearly I like those, the two names I picked to throw out there. From the beginning, I liked Cedar Trail, Trails, that one, I could go either way. And then I like the name Cougar Mountain because the school sits at the base of Cougar Mountain and it's a recognition of that space.
Okay, I can go. So my selection was also Cedar Trail for E 16. So I think singular. So I think we have something going there. I did select as my top choice for Middle School Six is Valor. So of all of the, I guess scenic names, I wasn't as excited. But Cougar Mountain Middle is my second choice. So I could be swayed there.
I think for me Cedar Trail was my first and I think that Principal Coyle, forever, people will say Cedar Trail or Cedar Trails and it will never be consistent. And that will be the spell check you will have to have the entire time. And I was really kind of conflicted. I like Valor Middle School too. And I think the naming convention is just different for us, right? We don't have anything named by a characteristic, right? Almost everything is named by a location, except for when we did the whole Apollo Discovery Challenger, the whole, you know, space program, which I used to work at NASA, so I love. So I could go either way with that one. Cougar Mountain doesn't seem as exciting as I think Valor, Valor Middle School I think is exciting.
I really liked Valor.
So I think historically we've done landmarks, which I think I like. But I also think Valor Middle School sounds like a charter school. And I don't think that it's going to be a charter school, so I would prefer Cougar Mountain.
I'm sorry. So what was your preference on Middle School?
Cougar Mountain. I second it, right? I never second anything.
You can second, you can second for the purposes of discussion and then vote against the motion. So I didn't, I didn't understand. Okay, so we have, it sounds like we have a pretty good consensus on Elementary 16 and we've got kind of two camps on Middle School Six.
I can respect the sort of scenic theme, although Cougar Mountain for me just isn't exciting. I can, I can respect going, I know many charter schools, but so Valor didn't give me that feeling. But I thought it was a bit aspirational and I like the description they've given us of it. But respecting the more, I guess scenic or local theme, then I can definitely go with Cougar Mountain Middle School.
Any more discussion?
I just, when we decide to open up our next innovative school, I know we're going to call it Valor.
Well, we absolutely could. Well, hearing no further discussion and having a motion on the floor, wait, Anne's about to raise her hand.
No, I was just going to, should we clarify? I think we should just be clear what we say for Cedar Trail or Cedar Trails. Before we finalize.
I heard dissension.
Right.
How many trails are on the site?
That's what made me.
So there's a trail that goes nearby the school site. But when the court team was talking, we talked about how there are cedar trees all around and there are trails all around for families to explore, like Kohani's right across from us and there's Yellow Lake Trail that goes around. There are other trails. So I almost think it should be plural, just because it's not just one trail. There are multiple trails in the area for families to explore.
I like, I like plural, just. Well, no, it's not. I mean, it's grammatical.
I moved to amend Elementary 16 to Cedar Trails Elementary.
Oh, you did? Which was it originally?
Because I was just seeing if we needed to amend.
Right, so your motion was your trails? Yeah, my emotion had the plural.
I was drawing my motion.
Okay. All right.
Ms. McKee, Principal McKee has her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Hello, I'm just waiting in anticipation. This is such an exciting moment. And I know all the Middle School Six court team members are watching. I'm happy to answer any questions. So interested in your conversation. You know, Valor was not very exciting to me at first either and all of these names are just really, really great. So there is a concern about Cougar Mountain Middle School. We would be the Cougar Mountain Falcons. So I mean, we will make it work and we love it. We love being on Cougar Mountain. That is something to consider. Also, we will feed into two high schools, Liberty and Issaquah High. Liberty is a name that is not a scenic name. I know there's a special story with Liberty, but just really excited to hear what your decision is. Just wanted to offer those thoughts to all of you.
Is there a problem with Cougar Mountain Falcons?
On Cougar Mountain?
Right, it's like Cougar Ridge. What is Cougar Ridge's mascot?
Bobcats, somebody yelled from the back.
That one's more problematic.
Yeah.
That's right. There was already a cougar.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry. Cougar Mountain Cougars is just bizarre anyway. Okay, well, I don't have a problem with Cougar Mountain Falcons.
I actually like that it's not matching Cougar Mountain Falcons. And I assume there's falcons on Cougar Mountain.
Well, to the extent.
There are.
The region.
Sure.
I'm not a bird lover, so sorry.
All right, well, I have a motion on the floor. So all those in favor of Cedar Trails Elementary and Cougar Mountain Middle, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Ladies, you have names.
Hallelujah. That was kind of exciting. I got to watch.
I said, now let's get working on our next innovative school.
Yeah. Yeah, I made a note.
Something's getting named.
Future Valor School, yeah.
Well, I was going to say, let him celebrate for all of four seconds before you give him something else to do.
Thank you, Principal Coyle and Principal McKee for all your help with this as well and your leadership.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work, but this was really fun. So thank you for letting us do that. We just don't get to, that's only, I was going to say, I've been on the board, what? This is my 15th year and those are my third and fourth schools to name. So, yeah, it's not something we get to do often. Well, okay, so you're special. I'm sorry, we haven't laughed in a long time. We haven't been together in a long time. Oh, Mr. Cooper.
Hello, I'm Jay Cooper, Chief Financial Officer. I just wanted to say that these kind of events are special to me because it's a long time, as you know, between bond committee and when you name a school. And so back in 2015, we put together a bond issue and then all, and I was telling my colleagues back there, I would be remiss not to thank all of you for your support and patience as we acquired land and built these schools. And it takes a long time and a lot of community effort. So thank you. One more milestone we've all reached together as a community and as a board and a cabinet. So really appreciate it.
And you know, maybe if you still have the email distribution list of that last bond committee, you could drop them a note and say that we just named their schools.
I will do that and apologies. I will remember next time that we have an in-person board meeting and not wear jeans to.
Getting a little casual there, CFO Cooper.
Yeah, we're not, well, you know, we talked about, Harlan said something about working through the clunkiness. CFO Cooper's jeans are part of the clunkiness. He'll do better next time. Okay, so I guess the fun is over. We are moving on to monitoring report EL 14 Learning Environment. This came to the board at our last meeting and we discussed it and sent it back to the administration for summer revisions. And it's back to us now in a revised format and I would entertain a motion. You want? Sure.
I move the board accept the monitoring report for EL 14 Learning Environment as presented.
Second.
Okay, and.
Yes, if I could, thank you to the school board for the opportunity to revisit EL 14, the instructional program. I thought we had a really good conversation two weeks ago about this. It was helpful. I also appreciate, excuse me, Executive Director Melish's help as we got back together after the last board meeting and reflected on this and kind of thought, well, what do we need to do to reflect? Not just what I heard from the board, but also as I reflected on it and some of the words that I heard about this, this document serves as not only a monitoring report, but in a sense, a bit of a record or history of what the district has gone through since March of 20 and the ordered closure. So you'll notice some changes. The first change in the very first line, that the superintendent certifies that the district is in compliance with EL 14 with two exceptions. And I kind of reflected back on when we have had exceptions to monitoring reports. And I have to be a little careful not to ever take these things personally, you know? I forget sometimes. I get so wrapped up in this work. But I felt that that was the appropriate path for me to take because some back and forth with staff and with some board members, that it's really hard for me to say that there weren't exceptions, particularly to the instructional program in the 20, the 1920 school year, particularly the last third of that school year. So in my general interpretation, you'll see that I added some language as well. And I'm just going to share that, that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, all Washington Public Schools were ordered closed to in-person teaching and learning in early March of 2020. This resulted in two exceptions to this executive limitation, EL 14. I do not believe the remote teaching and learning we were forced to implement met the standard of best instructional practices that support academic achievement as I have interpreted them in the past. And I really got to reflecting on what did our staff, students and families experience starting on about March 15th for the remainder of the school year? And I think we can all remember that we had some challenges out of the gate in remote learning. We had to distribute thousands of laptops. We were not live streaming. So I think the student experience was really hampered. And so it was hard for me then to say that that is the best practice because I don't believe that. So we implemented a practice. I don't believe we had any choice, but I can't say that it was a best practice in instruction. So we implemented a practice. I don't believe we had any choice, but I can't say that it was a best practice in instruction. I just, I I I couldn't support that, hence um, one of the exceptions um, that I've made in this report. I'm not going to go over all the other laundry list of ways that our staff, but I I do think it's important from that history standpoint to to be able to reflect back at some point and say, you know, this was hoisted upon all of us, our society. And um, a lot of people did a lot of really good work to try to respond to it. It didn't all stick. It it didn't all work well, but it wasn't for lack of effort that um, people were doing. So you can see um, and uh, a lot of the actions that were taken uh, by our teaching and learning department, by our special services department and and uh, are certainly out in the schools. And so there, so it makes this a a really lengthy report, I know, because we wanted to capture all of that. The other area with the most significant um, change also, it's pretty deep in the report, so I have to get to it here, is under item number six, ensure that the instructional program, including both content and practice, are uniformly implemented, regularly monitored and modified as necessary to assure the continuing effectiveness. I think we did a pretty good job of monitoring. Um, that's how we know that it wasn't working that well. I think we also um, uh, did a a pretty good job of um, trying to uh, the part where we didn't do a good job was on the uniformly implemented. I mean, we struggled there because we had thousands of machines that we had to get into the hands of people. We had different, kind of to our discussion earlier tonight, we had different comfort levels among educators and in that remote setting and using that. And and I think um, one of the board members pointed out, that's not the training that they received. It's not what they went to college to do. Um, so we did struggle a bit with that. In my interpretation of number six, I did say that the COVID nineteen pandemic necessitated significant modifications to the instructional program of the district. The ISD Central Office staff collaborated with school-based leaders to identify the most essential learnings. That was an important uh, part of what we did. Uh, uh, adapt scope um, sequence and instructional practices for synchronous and asynchronous delivery. However, it is noted that during the transition from in-person teaching and learning to remote teaching and learning, that there was a delay in providing some needed technology to the students and a range of teacher skill and abilities to teach in this new modality resulting in an uneven implementation. And if I have to acknowledge that there was uneven implementation, then I don't feel that I could say that we were um, in compliance with item six, hence the second um, um, my 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 second uh, exception to the report, if you will. Other than that, I know the 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 board has had the report for quite some time. Uh, we had a lengthy conversation about it two weeks ago. We did do the um, updating to just to provide even some more detail about some of the ways the system responded. Um, and it doesn't, I want to be clear, it doesn't feel good for me to approach you and say um, that um, we were only partially in compliance, if you will, um, given that we did have these two exceptions. Um, I've reflected quite a bit on that. I I don't really know exactly what we could have done. It it has been extraordinary times, to say the least. Um, but I do appreciate the efforts that everybody put forward, that the teachers, the support staff, the administrators, certainly the folks who support them here in this building. But I I have to acknowledge that there was just a couple of areas where we we definitely fell short. I appreciate the fact that we improved upon it, um, that we we learned from what happened last spring. Um, and I I think we have to, and I even heard a parent use the term earlier, we have to continue a growth mindset as we move forward into all these new modalities. Tonight, we're talking about concurrent teaching. We'll get better at it, just like we did this. And I just, I hope our teachers hear that, that I have tremendous faith that it it will get better. And um, hopefully someday, I hope we're back to focusing our professional development on what it's like to teach with humans all together in the same space, but we're just not there yet. So anyway, I, any questions um, prepared to take that the board might have about EL fourteen?
Questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I know this was never a fun conversation at the last board meeting because I know you're such a perfectionist and your team is so good at what they do. And I just want to reiterate that the conversation, at least from my perspective, at our last meeting, wasn't really about finger pointing about, I can't believe you didn't do this last year. It was really just being able to reflect an accurate record of what we did do. And I don't think that the board, certainly I don't have any belief that you didn't do what you were, you did the best you could with what you had and with what you were given direction from the governor. So I'm grateful for everything that you did do last spring, and I think that there was a lot of a lot of learning that was done last spring that prepared us for even this year. Yeah, yeah, tha- thank you. I do think that, you know, I've got a little list of all the learning, so I'll be so much better prepared for the next pandemic. I hope I never get to drag that list out.
Sydney, did you have a question or comment?
I have a go. Is that like your pandemic folder?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I I really think uh, for me, rereading it and the rework, uh, it's um, it's just a very good job. And I think for me, it's um, it's really indicative of a lot of the last year, which is having to work hard to separate effort from impact. And I think that's what we've been struggling with a lot, right? There's um, it's an incredibly difficult time. There's a lot of effort being um, expended and into a lot of ambiguous circumstance, which is, which is um, valor. Um, for sure, but at the end of the day, we have to acknowledge that the impact has been such in many ways that it, we haven't been able to provide um, the experience that we hold our standard to. And I I just think it, in reading, it's just indicative of a lot of the conversations we've had over the last years, a lot of the frustration that we've heard and a lot of the concern. And and so I think it does a nice job of of wrapping of wrapping that up in this in this report, which is, you know, an incredible effort, just a yeoman's effort that has to be applauded, and we have to be, you know, clear-eyed about impact. And so I I appreciate the 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 updates.
Thank you.
Anything else? Marnie?
So I, one of the things that I jotted down while reading through this is kind of the idea around our executive limitations as it defines, here's the work of the board, here's the work of the superintendent, making it a clear line. And I can see in the, you know, all of our executive limitations pretty much start out, the superintendent shall not fail to. And so it's not easy for the board to come back and say, we want you to rewrite this and acknowledge the things because it very much, we use these as part of your evaluation. And so that was not easy for us to do. And so I guess what I wanted to say is, but in my mindset, we are a team. We're a team of six.
I agree.
And so this is an acknowledgement for me that the entire system was not serving students, whether it, it wasn't that the board gave you direction and you didn't follow it, it's that none of us knew how the heck to best serve students in this situation. And um, there was disparate work being done from the first week that we were off. There were some teachers that still kept teaching new information, even though we said that that wasn't what was going to happen, all the way down to some teachers just did not know how to best provide that instruction to their students remotely. And we hadn't had the teaching and learning team ready and ready to go with a whole system of remote learning that they were able to do over the summer. So I think we have to acknowledge those things, but I wanted to say that this acknowledgement to me is that this is, we're still a learning institution. And we didn't know all the things we needed to know, and the ground kept shifting. I mean, it was supposed to be, you know, five, first it was two weeks to flatten the curve. Then it's five weeks, you know, that we were finally out. When the, when the governor gave the order, it was five weeks. And then partway through that, it was like, oh, yeah, you know, this was going to be till the end of the school year. And it was devastating for our families to hear all of that, and we were all this total life change. Um, and then trying to teach your children and have educators teach our children. It was not tough, but we have to acknowledge those failures so that if and when something comes up, whatever the bump is, how is it we tackle those? And are there thi- things that we can glean glean from this learning to be prepared for some other random thing that might happen? I mean, what happened to our system was like the worst possible scenario. I think the only other thing is I'm thinking of like the Paradise School District down in California where every building burned.
Yeah.
You know, or eighty percent of the homes burned in the area. Tho- those kind of things, you don't know what to do when the time comes and you just have to push through it the best you can. And I think we did that, and I think for me, that's the thing I want to acknowledge publicly is yes. Did we do, did we do well? No. We did the best we could, and I don't fault anybody for the system failure.
Appreciate those comments.
Anne?
Yeah, I agree more, I agree. Um, it's it's like the ground just kept shifting underneath us as far as what it is we were having to deal with and for how long we were going to have to deal with it. But I think one of the things we've taken away from it is we've learned to adapt, right? We've we've learned to adapt and we've learned to adapt more rapidly. Um, as we've had to address those things along the way, as we kept adapting to try to respond to them and as we continued to do it this year. So um, I appreciate all the work that went into um, the effort we had to educate our students last year and this year. And I do appreciate that this is much more of a reflection on what really occurred. Um, and I do appreciate that I think the team, everyone really did do the best that they could um, to provide and will continue to adapt.
Yeah. No, I I appreciate that, and I appreciate the comments, Director Mullin, I I wrote it down, that effort from impact, you know, you're right, there was a tremendous effort, but we can't, we got to be honest. I think your term was clear-eyed about what was the impact. And so um, this will, um, not the most pleasurable experience I've ever had. I will say it was absolutely a um, a good learning experience. It it forced me to be a bit more reflective about last spring and and frankly, just even as we move forward. Um, and so um, if we don't learn something from this terrible experience we've all had, that would really be a shame. So I think the system has learned and your 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 comment, um, Director Moore about the adaptability of this system, you know, I've always viewed large public school systems kind of like, you know, giant ships or icebergs. They're not easy to move around. Um, but a takeaway from me is they're easier than we thought because we proved to ourselves we could do some pretty extraordinary things um, in in an amount of time that I would have never dreamed possible. So I guess in a way, we've created a new expectation on ourselves. I think, I I really do think that we can uh, you know, our teachers amazingly have adopted a learning management system, implemented that system, and they are moving between these various modalities. And and I know it's hard. I I mean, I know, I hear the pain and some of the voices, but I I I also um, really have appreciated a can-do attitude on the part of a number of folks. It it is one of the parents tonight, you know, it really, i- it's about our students. It's about, it's about the kids that we serve. So it's hard, but 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 we can do it. So appreciate the input and appreciate the opportunity um, to letting me come back and take a second run at this.
Well, and I think as one of the principals said at the last S I P meeting, the word of the year is pivot.
Yeah.
And we have definitely demonstrated the ability to pivot more than once. And I agree with what you said about staff because staff are rock stars. They have been asked to, our teaching staff, to to change what they're doing so many times. Well, now you're not in the classroom, you're teaching remotely, you're live streaming, you're concurrent live streaming, you're, I mean.
Yeah.
The bar keeps moving and um, and it's hard for everybody. But I think I agree with what everybody said. I think the report that we have now is a fair representation of of what we did and all the good things that we accomplished and the couple of areas where we may have fallen short. So unless there are any other comments, we have a motion on the table. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we move to monitoring report E three civic engagement.
Yes.
All right, I move the board accept the monitoring report for N three civic engagement as presented. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Let me take it away. I do, I do have to just share one kind of uh, funny note. Um, one of my friends and colleagues, Superintendent of the Clover Park School District, uh, Ron Banner, has um, basically forbidden the use of the word pivot amongst all administrators now. And I don't know if you've ever met Ron, he's a, he's a pretty big intimidating guy. And if he tells me not to use the word pivot, I'm going to try not to use the word pivot. Uh, yeah, we kind of have a list of words that we're all getting tired of as a result of the pandemic. Uh, so this is the first time we have monitored um, civic engagement.
Yeah, we need to fix the wall, by the way.
I I I want you to see, I do have a little note right here. President Weaver says board plaque will be changed. Okay, full confessional, as we were working on this, I went, oh darn, we forgot to change the plaque. Um, so uh, that will be, that will be changed. Uh, Philip, um, in our capital projects has been alerted.
I'm going to acknowledge that you've been a little busy with other things, and and I think we're going to grant you some grace on that one.
Well, you know, in all honesty, hadn't been spending much time in this room for the last year.
My second thought, yeah.
But um, absolutely, it it will, it will read um, uh, civic engagement um, per the board direction and the changes that you made.
Change too.
Yeah, yes. And and in fact, um, there there is one place that I noticed in in the actual change, it's actually under three point one where we forgot to say, we left in the term, uh, understand and respect freedoms, rights and responsibilities of being an American citizen. And I couldn't remember if you intended to leave it in there that way or.
I think we did.
Okay, I I just had a note there that I couldn't remember. That was a place where we felt that was the appropriate phrase.
We didn't, we felt that the the um, the end as a whole needed to be inclusive of every person in our district, every student, every family in our district. But that doesn't mean even if you are a citizen of another country or um, whatever, that you still can't, um, that it's not still important for you to understand the rights and responsibilities of being an American citizen, because we are an American school system.
That's what I thought I recalled, but I just made a note to myself to check it. And yes, the statement uh, in the future will read, students will live as responsible members of society. For the board's language, the the new language. Okay, so um, civic engagement, and I know the board has has had this. And um, there are just a few things that I I wanted to um, highlight a little bit here. And I just realized I probably should have brought my reading glasses, but I think I can get my arm far enough away. Um, in my re- in the reasonable progress, a a statement added about student progress in the areas of successful adherence to behavioral expectations and applied learning from social studies courses was disrupted by the order of closure, by the ordered closure of public schools as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Again, one, once again, trying to recognize that um, while while we had two-thirds of a school year, we did lose a third of the school year last year, and when we lost that third, it does disrupt a bit the uh, the the learning, if you will, um, experience for our students. That was the one highlight. I did also just, I wanted to call out and highlight yet again, because it is an important piece of evidence for us. Um, the class of two thousand twenty, the the class that unfortunately lost the opportunity to graduate a person uh, registered the highest, maybe the highest on-time grad rate we've ever had. I I I haven't been able to find one higher going back. Uh, and so, you know, kudos to those students and and to the staff for working that. And and um, you can see the chart there. Um, our students really do work hard in these grad, these on-time grad rates. Okay, thank you, uh, Executive Director Moore. It's true, I I I could really benefit from this. Oh, but then they're going to steam up because of my mask too, so that'll be fun. Um, but I did want to call that out because that class deserves some um, some real props for that. A ninety-five point six on-time grad rate, and a lot of hard work from staff out there in our high schools to help that as well. And we'll continue those efforts, of course, going forward. I was going to go just a little deeper in on three point four, respect and understand diverse cultures. One of the things that we did want to highlight, and it's it's down in the evidence, it's down several bullets, but it's the number of books that are representing diversity in our core high school ELA courses um, with the diversity unit and and world history as well. So that's one of the things, I know we've talked about this before, but in this particular one, because it's. That's one of the things, I know we've talked about this before, but in this particular one, because it's understand and respect diverse cultures. We've really had to make a change in our system because when, if you look back, say, over the last ten years. And you looked at what, what we were using as source materials for our students. They didn't have a, a diver, diverse representation of cultures. So there's been a really intentional effort it, all the way through our system, from our elementary reading rooms. Now through our high school um, E L A curriculum to bring in books. That represent that diversity and those alternative narratives. So I just think that's been excellent work. That's part of our equity work. And something that um, I'm really proud of. And. Just so, uh, uh, the other thing I will say is somebody who's read a lot of children's books over the years as an educator and as a parent. Some of these, that we were depriving ourselves of some really, really rich literature by having our focus be too narrow in the past. So. It's uh, I think that that's an important thing that we're doing for our students. Under three point five, which is understand appropriate, respectful, responsible and ethical use. And impact and misuse of technology and social media. This is, this is part of your new language. You see a lot of things that we're um, trying to do and implement out there. Related to, to this three point five and in social media and digital citizenship lessons. I just wanted to note a couple of additions, the social emotional learning or S E L. At, at the eighth grade. And the K five bullying prevention scope and sequence as well. Again, just continuing to um, add and um, reflect on issues where we think that we have. We need to be improving our system and certainly understanding appropriate, respectful, responsible and ethical use. And the impact of misuse on technology and social media has been a big topic that we've had collectively. Together because we know, uh, and we see some of the really harmful impacts of that, that it's having on students. And in fact, uh, this board supported Dr. Gallager and myself in a presentation on, on that. At the last time we were in a live um, was the conference together. And then noting um, uh, and this is a statement, uh, the, just one of the limitations. Uh, we're kind of related to, it's almost capacity building uh, the uh. Due to the challenges created by the pandemic, that we didn't have any healthy use survey, was not administered. And won't be administered now until next fall in the fall of twenty one. And the I S D post grad survey was sent to our twenty twenty one grads in March. Historically, we have done that during the, the December break. But we were later, late on getting that out this year. Um, but we did get it out. So we will, we'll get post grad survey data will be available um, later this spring. So that data is. It's probably available now. I just haven't had it and pulled it and reviewed it. So some of our practices and processes certainly were disrupted. Not, you know, along the way as well. And um, but that doesn't mean that we stopped doing them. It just means some of them have been delayed. So other than that, I was just gonna be prepared to take questions from the board about E three or any comments that you might have or anything. That you wanted to probe a little deeper on.
Yeah, this doesn't really relate to the report per se, but did I see something that the state board? Is talking about an ethnic studies requirement?
It is under consideration.
Yeah, so we don't have a timeframe for that yet? Curious, it seems like it would be a good thing.
Yeah, I, I, you know, Donna Hood actually follows the state board work pretty closely in her role as Executive Director of High Schools. I too saw that, but I don't, I don't know. Just like magic, I say their name and they just appear. Yeah. So I, I don't know, Executive Director Hood, if you have any um, information about the state board and where they might be going with the ethnic studies. Uh, course requirement?
Yeah, you know, I haven't recently, um, I am attending a webinar next week with the State Board of Ed. And I know Melanie Benano from Student Interventions is, is likely to attend that with me. Um, we've largely been tuning in, of course, on waiver details, that sort of thing. I, I will certainly listen for that. If I have a chance to ask questions, I will do it. I, I haven't seen anything recently giving any sort of timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, you know, timeline, do they expect it to be a full semester? Or is it a little thing that they pop into a civics or some other course or, and maybe they're not there yet?
Yeah, that, that, those are all kinds of things that we watch because you, you do kind of. You know, you don't want to be surprised by something that just pops in all of a sudden and, oh, you've got this new requirement. And you're right because. You, as we know, I mean, it's a lot better in our system now since we've been fortunate enough to be able to go to a seven period day. But sometimes, you know, if they start crowding too many uh, requirements in there, it takes a lot of that flexibility away for students to take other things. So um, it seems like that would be, I guess the, as we monitor that conversation. Um, you know, there's just been lots of talk. There's been talk about. Walking back the core twenty four and everything down there. So there's a lot to watch right now with the.
Yes.
With the uh, state board.
Yeah, well, I was just curious. I mean, I know we added the diversity unit in world history one, which I think is great. But it's like, what, two weeks? I mean, it's not.
Yeah, it's a unit. It's not a class.
Yeah, and so it, it feels like we could do more. Um, so I'm just sort of curious as to what kind of guidance we'll get from the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so I interrupted in there. Um, do I have comments or uh, questions from the board?
So. You know, I was pushing hard for the. Inclusion of. Technology and social media because I think it has a huge impact on our students' mental health. And. I think that I will continue to be dissatisfied with the evidence until the district actually creates a comprehensive curriculum that addresses that. So nothing that I haven't said every year since we even developed this. But I, I don't believe that the hodgepodge manner by which we're doing it. Is gonna actually meaningfully impact kids' use of technology and social media, especially after this year. But. Because the, the, the reason why the board did this was because we know the. Long term impact on our kids' mental health. And that's why it's important for our kids to learn and know that. And I'm not convinced the way it currently is done, especially through second steps, using that as a crutch to say like, this is what we're doing. Is really actually going to get us to where we want to get to. Does that mean I wholesale disagree with this report? No, but that one particular element I think is still a, a net. Need.
Uh, I will say um, Director Gallagher, that one of the really good things that I think has happened. And I, I certainly understand your, your, your comments because what, it, it almost, you know, you can see where over time. We've plugged it in to different places. The one thing I will say that's been good about the conversation we've been having, though, it has caused us to do an inventory, to make sure that we're touching things. But it, and um, to your point, as far as a one comprehensive curriculum, yeah, we have not developed that at this point. I mean, I, I know, and, and I think your, your point too about this past year and. Sadly, I feel that the pandemic has exacerbated some of the negative aspects of social media. And uh, frankly, our, our students have a tremendous amount of more time that they're in front of screens and can do this. And, and I don't know that that's a, that's a good thing. But it is something that's under constant review. I am encouraged by the fact that it is woven through in a lot of places. It just, it's, it may not be as um, comprehensive. At this point, but I know it's, it's a ongoing topic of conversation. I know. Executive Director Malish and Director um, Eggers, they, this has been a big topic amongst. Certainly that department as well. So I don't know, Rich, if you had some thoughts about that?
Yeah, I'd love to highlight one thing that could be in this report and one thing that can't because it's about this year. So, but I'll say it anyway. Um, so I do want to highlight that um, kind of hidden in that social media and digital citizenship lessons, K twelve. Is some work at the elementary level that, that may look small in there, but is much closer to a comprehensive elementary. Uh, digital safety and citizenship uh, curriculum through our librarians. Our librarians got together last year to do a scope and sequence. And so they took, a lot of, a lot of librarians had been developing uh, digital safety and, and citizenship lessons. And so we took a look at, at their lessons and work. Um, they looked at other resources and they created a scope and sequence. For the elementary librarians that could be done in all schools. Over the, over the course of time to have more of a comprehensive approach to this at, at the elementary. And I see that Diana Eggers is available as well to us if there's questions about that work. And I was gonna say, at the high school, we are, we do have a committee going right now, doing an audit. And I'm gonna take the feedback that I'm hearing today to that group because they're gonna put a charter together for uh, an adoption. And of course, we're in a place where we're not sure how quickly we can get through adoption processes, but. Their job is to come up with a charter that. Around all the different requirements from sexual health to S E L to digital safety and citizenship at the high school. And see, see what next steps are for that.
And. We did just also meet with our middle school health teachers. I think it was yesterday or the day before. They are going through a, they started a middle school health adoption last year. Um, and they got most of the way. Uh, and now it's, it's resumed. And so I believe the I M C has um, reviewed the textbook. And then in meeting with the middle school health um, adoption committee yesterday. We were talking about where are we hitting um, just those very things that you're talking about, um, Dr. Gallagher. Is that, you know, there's a whole module in the middle school health textbook about emotional health. But are in that emotional health area um, in the curriculum, are we also talking about? The social media impacts of your emotional health and how do you recognize when social media is impacting your social? Or, or your health and um, when, how do you know when to walk away? How do you recognize it? How do you um, how do you reach out to people? Um, so the conversation with the health teachers was very positive, I felt. And um, they are very interested in having um, more uh, ties in their curriculum. To the social media and online environment that our students are living in every day.
Thank you. I appreciate the. Clarification and, you know, reading through what you did for the mapping out of elementary school is really helpful. It's the, I didn't understand that that was something that the librarian, so that means that every librarian in elementary school would go through and, and be teaching that. To their respective grade levels. Is that like?
Yes.
Return to normal?
Yes, they did it. This, this is actually one of those special moments in our district where a group of educators took work that of innovation over time. And standardized it across schools. So they, they came up with what they called a scope and sequence, which is what we refer to in the contract as what must be taught. And so they, they moved their innovation into an agreement that we will all teach this.
And I think it's great. Like, I mean, it looks fantastic. And I think that, that's exactly what I would like to see. And then the, the hard part is like when I then look at high school, it just says. You map it out K five and then sixth grade is some of the second steps up. And then high school just says, two lines, high school.
Yeah.
Neither of which are very fulfilling.
Yes, and I, I do, I, 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 I really hope and I'm, we're trying to chip away at this. I do, I thank you, uh, Director Eggers for reminding us about the middle school health because we do believe that health is a great place to, to embed that curriculum. And so in the middle school level, we're hoping that health curriculum will help, help uh, fill some of that gap. And we're really looking at it at the high school now to make sure it's a more, more robust. It's a little tricky at the high school and I saw, I saw, I saw Executive Director Hood up there. Because, you know, we have all the grad requirements, so it, it's a little bit harder to just. Keep adding coursework at the high school. So I know that Director, uh, Executive Director Hood and I have had some robust conversations. And is now teaming with us to come up with a solution to this. I don't know if you had more to say on that, Director, Executive Director Hood?
Actually, no, I was, I, I was not going to say something about that, but I did find um, a statement from the State Board of Ed. They did conduct a, a student listening panel and I was aware of it. Apparently after that student listening panel, they did craft a resolution and they will have a framework for us on what ethnic studies. May look like by December twenty twenty one. So that'll be something that Executive Director Melish and I are, are watching out for closely. So that we are meeting their timelines and things, but that's what we expect to know what, what form the ethnic studies will take.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Sydney?
And it may or may not be directly related to this monitoring, but I guess it's interesting and maybe it's even the renaming of it to civic engagement. Um, that makes me wonder about any current um, requirements or program we have for. Community service, volunteerism. Um, and if that is in place today, I guess at a minimum, high school or, or middle?
There are for some programs, but I, I've not just as an in general, uh, in general requirement for all. I, the one that comes to my mind is the um, National Honor Society has a requirement for that. I see uh, Executive Director Hood is about to uh, incorrect it apparently.
Yeah, well, every year, uh, hundreds of our graduates earn their red service cords. So you've probably seen those on our graduates. And they have completed community service hours to get those cords for graduation. And we also do have like, like you mentioned Superintendent Thieley, lots of clubs that support community service action. And sometimes it's in the very local community and sometimes it goes bigger. So Key Club is another one that has lots and lots of kids involved in serving the community.
Yeah, I guess I felt like I knew that. So I don't see us, I guess, expressing that here. Which seems like it would be a good place to.
Well, but do we not because it's not required?
Yeah, that, the historically, if I, I can't tell you that every student it, does it or has access to it, you know. But I, I know we fudge that um, occasionally. It is something we could have included.
I was gonna say, I don't think we're, we're bound to an every student.
No, I mean, that's kind of a, it, it's, this goes back to conversations, monitoring conversations that. Were happening around, not this room, but around in this kind of uh, monitoring process. There was a time when the direction was, well, if you can't tell me that every student can do it, then. I don't think that you can certify that that is something that you can say that students do. So. Yeah, I, and again, I, I will admit, you can go through these reports that have my, my fingerprints all over them. And you'll find examples where I've actually done that almost, not ever in defiance of that direction uh, from the board or earlier board. But that has been something that, that could be why we haven't flowed that into this report, I would assume.
And, and I guess for me, it does beg the question, right? If it is about civic engagement, is that something that should be? An opportunity for all um, i- in some form? And so maybe that's a conversation we can continue to have, but it, it seems, for me, that's jumping out on the page. And what is the, maybe requirements the wrong term, or what's the opportunity? Available to participate in that way as, as a way of building or building civic engagement, civic understanding.
And I know there's also. In Man Take, and I don't know if it's at all, but at least in the middle school, or at least with what my kids went through, there was community service. That was required as part of courses they were in.
Yes.
But I don't know if it's in all middle schools, but that's another time where that exposure is given to kids about. Engaging in the community and.
It was a retirement for high school health, but I'm not sure if it was all the health classes or if it depended on your teacher.
Right.
And also I'm going back a lot of years, so.
Me too.
And I was just gonna say, in, in three point seven, I think we could easily continue to expand that list. Because that's where we've listed some of the opportunities and some of those aren't, you know, not all of our students are on green team, but we have students on green team. Not all of our students are doing our, our leaders in web. But we offer it to everybody and, and then that is a place where students are giving back to their community.
Fun students do have access to the web services.
Yeah.
Not all students have access.
Yeah.
Not all students get to, to lead in web because you have limitations on how many kids can do that.
But I'll, I'll, we could solicit more of what, because I, because I think this is just the tip of the iceberg of what schools are doing around community service. So we could certainly. Do something to get a survey of what's happening out in the schools with regard to community service. Because I, I, I know there's a lot more that is going on than, than is listed here, but in terms of what's universal and, and what's just. A hodgepodge of options. And I say hodgepodge this case in a good way because I think you need to express giving back to the community in a multiple ways, not just one way.
I, I will note, Director Moore, because um, the school that you were referring to, there was a time when I was the principal of that school. And it was in, interesting that you kind of just brought this back to me. Now, this goes back almost twenty years now. Because we did have that requirement. You are correct. And if I'm not mistaken, I was the principal that actually got rid of that requirement. Because I recall. Because I recall, and remember, these were, I think it was a seventh grade requirement, if I'm not mistaken. And there was a lot of parental concern that was being raised about the impact that it was having on the family. That because as a seventh grader, to get to a volunteer, a parent had to drive them there. There was concern about, and do we have enough places where we feel safe that the kids can go and go? There was a lot of issues that came up, bottom line. And so that requirement did go away. But I agree with what Rich is saying. That's not to say that our students don't do a tremendous amount of community service in our community. And it's just not necessarily the required organized way that we were doing it 20 years ago.
I was gonna say to that, you know, if you do put a requirement back in, I think we would now find ourselves really requiring that we have systems in place to provide access to that. Whether it's access transportation wise, whether it's access to, what are the options out there? So you talk about many of those things that come to mind of who then engages. So what can we do at the school to promote that without making it a requirement? To highlight the community service that's going on within our community, within our schools, our voice mentors, you know, our parents that come in and volunteer, that that's what community service looks like or bringing in people that are doing that. We all up here, our community service, right? This is, this is our community service.
Dr. Gallinger was doing some community service all day today over at Isqo Middle School.
So I think it's, it's a matter of how do we provide that apart from just a requirement like you have to.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Director Muraldo, because it becomes an equity issue. And so, so you're right. I, I, and again, you mentioned voice mentors. The biggest single group of voice mentors are our high school students. So they're, they're out there doing it, but we do, we, we, we have to move away from, you know, and again, this was 20 years ago. Making an assumption that every student has a parent who can drive them to do volunteer work or that they belong to a faith-based organization or something like that. You know, we, we have to abandon those assumptions. If we value it, we have to provide the opportunities to make it happen for them. I did want to say too, that another way that our students do this is through their associated student bodies. And they do, you know, jacket drives and canned food drives and, and all the, I mean, in a lot of these schools, you get almost 100% participation from our students. So we do try to find some opportunities that maybe are a little more age appropriate too. But, but it's certainly something that has a, a, a high value in our, you know, we're a very giving community. And teaching our students that lesson too, I think it's valuable to them. It's just not something that we have a formalized process yet at this time.
And I would also, if you don't mind, I just would love to say that I also think that we, we've tried the approach of enticing people and, and, and teaching students because I think forced community service isn't really a spirit in which we want community service. My son has reminded me of that at times, so.
Your senior son, yeah.
Or my freshman, probably more my freshman.
Well, it's, you know, you reminded me of something too, Rich, and I know the board has done a lot of these over the years, like I have. Our senior exit interviews, it's rarely I did a senior exit interview where a student didn't share with me the community service that they had been, that they had done through their high school experience, sometimes through DECA and other things like that too.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just say the header should be also reflective of civic engagement. So if you look at the header of every page on our report, it says citizenship.
Yeah, I was gonna point that out too. I just noticed it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We'll get it all. Yep, I, I. Civic engagement.
Anybody else? All right, I have a motion on the table. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll get some of that, that cleanup on the, the civic engagement and all of that too. So appreciate that.
Okay, we're down into the home stretch. The next thing is a really second read of the proposed executive limitation to treatment of people and 12 learning environment, treatment of students. At, or I think it's, we were gonna change it to learning environment. And we decided that we wouldn't take board action on this because when we discussed it last time, there were some not insignificant changes that were suggested we make. And EL 12 is not due to be monitored until April. I think it's April 22nd. So we have enough time to approve this at our next meeting and still have it in place for the following year's monitoring. When you monitor in April, obviously you'll monitor old EL 12, but that would give us the full year for new EL 12. And it also gives us the opportunity to just discuss it once again in front of the public. So I'm gonna start with EL two first because I think we didn't make a lot of changes. We eliminated the words for high stu-, for high student achievement in number one. And we moved number four to be number two. And other than that, we left it alone. So do you have anyone that has any issues on EL two, proposed EL two? Harlan?
Did EL two have a value statement with it that it's just not on it? I don't remember because I don't remember if you've done it on all of them or?
EL two had a value statement and I combined the EL two value statement with the old EL 12 value statement, which is why it's two sentences long. And then it was the new EL 12 that we had to draft a new value statement for. So this is just the two that we had sort of blended together.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on EL two? Because I think, I think the more meat is on EL 12. So we again eliminated the words high student achievement and added on the value statement that grading practices should be equitable and homework should contribute to overall student learning as part of our board value. We, what did we do? Okay, I think it was Director Moore that suggested in one C, we actually referred to secondary departments. Because we don't really have departments at elementary school. So consistency across grades and secondary departments. We added to A to parrot the, that homework practices should also be consistent across grades and secondary departments. And then we eliminated the elementary, middle and high school because that's just kind of all on B. We eliminated C and gave it its own bullet point on number three. So the superintendent shall not fail to solicit regular feedback from stakeholders on grading and homework policies with consideration for overall student workload. That got rid of the clumsy wording. It gave it its own thing. The superintendent cannot fail to do it himself or he cannot fail to delegate it to someone else. And then Director Muraldo got back to me on number eight. And then I threw it back at you and.
And then, yeah, and then I.
I did not intend to change the intent of that. I think I was thinking that when I said equitable instead of the same as, that I no longer needed to call out gen ed, but if you feel that doesn't scratch the itch, we can absolutely put it back in.
So one of the things I thought was, as I was trying to process it, and I really didn't have an answer for you, which is why I didn't.
I thought you were just ignoring me.
Students are general education students first, right? So then I thought, well, okay, so I do, I do want it to be scratched up, but how do I highlight? That to me sometimes, I don't know, sometimes we insert equitable and I'm wondering if it just doesn't need to be there. If it should just be ensure that special education students have the opportunities to reach their full potential.
Well, yeah, because if you're going to take out the as something.
Right.
Yeah, the comparison, then you could do that. Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that it, the, the same as general ed. We, first, we didn't like it because we thought it should be equitable, but you bring up a very good point, which is of course, special ed students are general ed students, so it's kind of meaningless to begin with. Whether you want the word equitable before opportunity.
I could just say.
Could go either way.
That special ed students have the same opportunity to reach their full potential in an environment that's welcoming, safe and inclusive as possible.
So you don't want to say the same because it's the same as, and then you've got to have a comparison. They can have the opportunity or they can have equitable opportunities. I think I would be fine with either one.
So I, I totally understand what you're saying, Director Muraldo. I think for me, I want this to be enjoying beyond the five of us here and beyond the administration that currently exists. And I want them to know very clearly a decade from now that we don't mean that they just have opportunities, but we want to make sure that they have barriers removed. So if they need more supports to have that equal or same opportunity, even though they are general education students first, that, that we're actually saying that that, that's meaningful. I think that's why for me it's important. It's not for, we all know what it means without that word. I'm not sure a decade from now that they will, and I don't want two superintendents later to have that not be the intent.
Okay, so you're arguing to basically leave it the way it's written?
The way you have it written out, yes.
The way it's edited, I should say. Okay.
I don't feel bad surrounding about it, but that's just from my background is why I like it.
Um, what's interesting though about what you just said was underscoring the support side. That the, the barriers are removed or they have the appropriate supports in order to take advantage of these opportunities. So is that, is that part missing? Because that's where I thought you really put your biggest emphasis just now.
I, well, for me, opportunities are supports in that setting. When I think about any sort of thing equitable for our students, my personal belief is that our superintendent and our board, we set the bar for this is where we believe that students should achieve. And then our job is to make sure that every student has the supports they need to get to that place. And some students need more support and some students need less supports.
So what if we said equitable opportunities and necessary supports to reach their full potential?
I like, I like that.
And we do mention supports in the, the value statement. We talked about all academic and social emotional learning supports necessary. So we're, so we're really parroting the value statement, but I would have no problem with adding unnecessary supports.
I, I like that.
I like the addition because I think it, it underscores, you can't just offer it and, and know that you can't take advantage of it. Right? Like we offered. So I do like the unnecessary supports.
I realized I was trying to edit the wrong document. I couldn't figure out why it wouldn't let me.
And, and number three gets to what I was.
Did I finally scratch that in?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Quite a bit for me with the, for overall student workload piece. So thank you.
Along with that, my request for the value statement that we add the word meaningful to grading practice should be equitable and homework, and homework should meaningfully contribute to overall student learn. Because I think it'd be argued that any homework could contribute, but we're not just asking for, oh yeah, you just said 50 problems, even though you didn't need to do 50 problems. That I think what I heard from the discussion was as a board, we really want the homework actually to matter.
Right. No. I don't know that we do. We say ensure that homework practices are equitable and based on a comprehensive and objective review of best practice research.
I, I thought at some point we had meaningful related to homework and I don't know if it was just in conversation and we never put it in. But absolutely homework, that's in all of our discussions, it's been around homework should be meaningful.
Well, maybe we don't actually have it other than the value statement. And maybe that's where we were.
Right.
We were, well, we, we didn't really because that's what we were talking about adding meaningful. Well, okay, fair enough. Contribute to the overall, whichever way you're putting that in. But maybe we need to add something to number two.
I, I really think if it's grounded in best practices research, it will be meaningful. So I think that how to is written should be fine.
That's fair.
And I don't have the, the procedures at the, the district procedures to know if it's maybe in there in that conversation.
So this is all being revised again. Are you gonna ask for any public input on this?
I certainly can. I'm not sure we have any public left in the meeting, but yes, I'm happy to do that while we're on. In fact, let me do it while we're on looking it up. Is there any public input on executive limitation number 12, which is learning environment?
And while we're waiting for hands, I think that would be important when our communications director sends out a notice tomorrow, what the, you know, summarizing the board stuff, maybe a link or something to say that we're soliciting some type of feedback from the community, that this, that would be an opportunity for them to provide us feedback on these executive limitation drafts.
Sure.
Because I don't see any hands going.
I don't, I don't think we have any public. There's only 45 people left and I bet two thirds of them are staff. Well, I shouldn't say any public. There are a few, but.
Staff could have contributed. No, I just want to make sure that the whole point of why we're doing these is to get.
Yes, no, I understand that. Although people aren't shy about emailing, so. Okay, well, I don't see any hands, so I think.
I'd love to have feedback about something other than what's happening now. It's very tactical. You know, this is just, this is much more strategic. These are our plans for the future, forward looking.
This is policy. This is our strategic planning. All right, yeah. Oh. There's Leisha.
Thank you. I have a better device in the office for doing our write-up for tomorrow. So this is working out quite well. I heard you mention sending something to solicit feedback. Do you guys want to do something like a thought exchange on this or do you just want people to respond and write an email or to what's?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be like a thought exchange. It can just, if people have input, thoughts, comments, please email the board.
Okay, perfect.
Because we don't get enough email.
Yeah, I, I'm rea-, I'm reading through the, the guidance and the procedures and I can't find that meaningful phrase. I, I don't know if I, somehow that was in my brain. And there's a lot of words here. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of good stuff in there, but I can't find that. It's just.
So I noticed Ms. Burns has raised her hand.
I'm sorry, we do have a hand. Kaylee Byrne, did you have public input?
Yeah, sorry. I'm back. I'm not crying this time. I'm sorry. I just want to caution, I guess, the board that I'm, I love what you're talking about, about the homework and making sure it's meaningful. I personally just give homework based on student needs, so I love that. I just, I am worried that if there's not more guidance on that and I just, I hope that you, like I hear you asking for public input, but I'm, I will say, I, when you say that, I'm not sure if you mean teachers sometimes. And I would say that I think that there are teachers that could give you some meaningful feedback on that. And I just, I hope you listen to them. And I, I really hope that you ask for their opinions because I love that we're having this conversation. I think it's so important. But I do think that meaningful homework is gonna mean a very different thing teacher to teacher. So I just hope that that's a part of this conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and to be clear, the board is creating policy. The board is not telling staff what to do. The board creates policy which the superintendent. The board is not telling staff what to do. The board creates policy which the superintendent and his staff translate into guidance for um staff, teachers, employees, and whatever. So, so there's another step in there.
Yeah, and I think that we've been intentionally to not be prescriptive.
Exactly.
This is really mostly value-based. And to be as comprehensive as we can in the value-based things that we do, and was what came up in the last revisit at E O was we do value consistency across the system. And that's what we're trying to get is it seems that from an equity standpoint, student experiences were different based on who their teacher was from a workload standpoint, which then can impact their stress levels and everything else. So it, it is about bringing equity to that.
Okay, so um with that, um, I've got two changes that I made to this. I will um shoot out a revised, a revised revised copy for Diane to attach to the agenda for our next regular meeting. And we can take action at that point. Cause I don't, I mean, I think these are good changes, but I don't think they're so significant that we need another read.
Well, and for um Lisha to have that updated version when she.
Lisha.
She's gonna, oh, sorry. I know, can we?
No, I know. They all have names that sound alike. I do it all the time.
I, I think Marnie has just proven that it's after nine o'clock. Okay, so thank you very much for that. Um, I've got so many windows up here that I've lost the agenda. Hang on, it's coming. Oh.
I might just add while you're doing that too, President Weaver, that I would encourage folks to look at our two thousand policy, twenty-four, twenty-two on homework and the procedure that accompanies it. There actually is a lot of really good guidance in there. And it is a, it, there, there are some thou shall not do as well, such as homework may not be assigned as a disciplinary measure. I mean, so we do have some policy and procedures as it relates to homework in our two thousand series under instruction.
Okay, I've completely lost the agenda, but I think what's next is legislation. I, I think this is because at home I moved that screen onto my other screen and every once in a while this computer forgets and thinks it's over there on the screen that's at my house. So apparently the agenda's up at my house, but it's not. Anyway, legislation, Harlan.
Sure. Can I share a screen, Stephen? These are Jason's. So we completed two weeks' worth of meetings with uh our federal representatives, so Congressman Smith's staff, Shire's staff, and Del Benny's staff, as well as from Senator Murray and Cantwell's offices. And I think those are really productive meetings. I think that they really heard loud and clear that the funding was meant to be equitable based on Title I funding, but it really presented distinct challenges uh when it came to how the actual allocation went. What they told us was is that ten percent of all funding could be held back at the discretion of OSPI and for distribution however they felt was appropriate. And given that S R three was twelve billion dollars worth of K-12 funding, that ten percent of that would be substantial to be able to hold harmless all this money we've spent across our district and most of our surrounding districts for COVID mitigation. And the disparities are great in the, in the order of while we're getting six million dollars of S R three funding despite spending over twenty million dollars. When, when you count in all the additional teachers we've had to hire, all the money we've spent, the lack of uh the, of enrollment. Highline has less students and they are getting thirty million dollars just of S R three funding. So it's substantial. So I, I think that that they heard really loud and clear. And then tomorrow we meet with Superintendent Reichdahl to really, again, link those messages and push them back to him. Uh, because he's the one that told us that, hey, your next step is you need to meet with the federal folks about S R. So now let's say we did our homework, we did what you asked, and this is what they said. So you have one point two million dollars that you can allocate to districts like ours. So we're held harmless. So I'm excited about that. Do you have others you're going to add to for those federal conversations, Marnie?
I'd say the toothpicks was that um Senators Murray's, Murray's aide was like, uh, if you want any type of waivers, especially long-term waivers around state assessments, not going to happen. I don't even think she liked the idea of waivers this one, this time around. So I did not like the sampling. She's like, no, it needs to be every single student. Needs to have a standardized test that's same across the nation. That's, that's her stance. So if there's any idea that we might possibly move from that, no, she's the chair of the Senate Health Committee. Um, so that's not going to happen. Um, and I'm trying to think of the other piece. That was my big takeaway. Oh, and the other discussion was really around um the calculations I've always considered title dollars were linked to the federal, like the free and reduced lunch, but they're not. They're tied directly to the federal um poverty level. And so it's no wonder that this gets exacerbated. The federal poverty level for a family of two, let's say a, a, a single parent and a child is seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. I would like to know what family of two in our area can live off of seventeen thousand dollars. That's why we don't have that many because it's an insane amount when you look at our median income in this area is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So if we get any dollars, imagine that means there are families out there making seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a year trying to live in Issaquah or Newcastle or Sammamish. It's insane. So I thought that was really interesting, but, but it seems like she still didn't tie when I said, yeah, but you look at housing and urban development, another federal program bases everything off of area median income. So you can actually be considered an extremely low-income family and not qualify as a Title I family. It's crazy.
If I move on to the WASDA part, I thought you looked like you wanted to.
Oh, yeah.
I did briefly. I think Superintendent, if you wouldn't mind maybe emailing uh that document of the top twenty districts to Director Muraldo and Director Gallinger that my colleague in Lake Washington prepared that.
Yeah, I have it on my.
Show the S R three total.
You mean the document that I've been dropping into every conversation I've had with everybody from D C Y F to Representative Callan, who told me that she thought it was the third time that she had gotten it from somebody in our district.
Correct. It does show our six million. I think Highline's about eighty-six million.
Well, when you combine all of the S R money.
All the S R's.
Yeah, yeah. There, it's, it's tenfold. Some districts are receiving over five thousand dollars per student and we're receiving just over three hundred dollars per student. I, I want to be clear, we're not saying that, that districts that serve high poverty communities don't deserve more money for a lot of things like reading remediation and food supplements and all of that. The point that we've been trying to make is for COVID mitigation, the costs don't vary. That Plexiglas, these masks, they cost the same. It should, there, some of their formula should have been based on size of district and F T E and number of buildings. That would have made a lot of sense. Um, but.
That chart is appalling. I mean, I think it's good that it, I think it's good that Lisa's gotten it three times.
Yeah, no, and, 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 and credit to, to, I believe it was Barbara in Lake Washington, who actually, the twenty largest districts. And it shows that we are, again, we're down there at, I believe, three hundred and thirty dollars per student, per F T E. And there are districts in the state that will be receiving over five thousand.
Yeah. In my circles of CFOs that we speak to, we um we were pleading with OSPI that we, no district should have a windfall from COVID. Right? That's not, I don't believe that was the intent of the federal government. They did not apportion these funds similar to the ARA funds during the Obama administration when it was more on a per-student basis. And since they use Title I, as you know, and it's done by the TANF um and the census blocks, it's, that's not a formula that really helps us out. Or anybody on the east side um of King County that has had that significant enrollment decreases. So.
Yeah.
We'll be waiting for a state backfill, we hope, but we need, of course, we have the levy hold harmless bill. Um, and then everything else seems to be being pushed to the supplemental budgets, which I have to go read after this meeting.
Right. Well, and as Dr. Gallagher said, they, they have the right to hold some money back that they could redistribute to try to s- to soften the edges of.
And I do think unfortunately with that, Dr. Gallagher, I believe when they took their ten percent, that that may go right back into OSPI or state coffers for.
Well, that's why we're going to have a conversation tomorrow about it.
Yeah.
But we did, I actually did share that document with them. And I certainly know there was surprise from Shire and Smith's staff.
Yeah.
They have much more earnest interest in what happens to us than Senator Murray's staff, who didn't seem to really care.
Wouldn't even respond. I haven't seen that document. I'm not going to comment on it.
Uh, so unless you have a, I'm going to pivot to WASDA. So again, Dr. Muraldo can fill in uh where I miss. But we have been doing advocacy for WASDA to play a more active role in communication with the governor's office and D O H to address things that is impacting every school district in our state. And so we had a meeting on Friday that was planned and I helped draft this letter that went to the governor's office on Monday morning. So I don't know if you guys, if you guys haven't seen it, then I'm sorry. I didn't send it to you. Uh, but it was three main things that we really wanted the governor's office to consider on Monday morning. It was adopt the recently updated CDC guidance on physical distancing in schools. Clarify that the qualifications for high-risk workers once they've been fully vaccinated, because we know that's been a huge impact in our district. And then provide updated guidance and required safety measures for fall twenty twenty-one as soon as possible. And so um we are grateful that the governor certainly did a press release today about addressing one of those things. And uh we are hopeful that our continued advocacy will address them because it's about removing the barriers that get us back to the opportunity to provide in-person learning for every student next year. And that was our approach to it and how we got to where we landed as sort of our top three things. So I'll let Dr. Muraldo fill in where I left off. And if there's any questions.
No, I, I think, I think that kind of solidifies the conversation we had on, as a WASDA board.
Um, I, I will share that um I had a conversation with the governor's office today. And um your document did have an impact because um they referenced all three of those points. The, the initial conversation was related to the three-foot, six-foot, basically giving some of us a heads up of what, what we could expect. I said, uh, I appreciated that from the governor, but that I also thought it was critical that the governor continue as, as the WASDA document points out, we need to be talking about the fall as well. Because, and, and it's going to all tie together. Because unless we can make it clear to people that the fall is going to look much more like normal life in schools as they remember it. I, I don't think we're going to get back our enrollment. I think it's critical to our enrollment. And when you look at the, and districts all around have lost enrollment. It's, I, I recently was looking at some Puget Sound demographic data done by an outside demographer. We are not alone. A lot of districts have experienced, even districts like Enhamclaw, ten percent loss. Now that's only four hundred students, but when you only have four thousand. Um, and so um just making that point, um, they seem to understand that. And um so that was one plead. And I was happy, while I didn't get to hear the governor's news conference, I was told he did reference the fall in it. So, and specifically that they are looking creatively at this idea of um uh the high-risk employees once vaccinated. So I just wanted you to know, um, Director Gallagher, that all three of those things came up in a conversation today. And then I was, and the fact that they are reaching out, the governor's office has reached out to me personally, and I know that this isn't, they're doing this with all superintendents um like three times in the last month. So my interpretation is they, they, maybe they realized that they, they were, they had too small of an audience that they were allowing to influence them. And so that's opening up. And I appreciate that, that they're hearing directly from superintendents and, and leaders in school districts. And um that WASDA is getting a, a much better seat at the table, if you will. And so that was encouraging. Um, because I think, just to call it out, I think that the concern that people have is that the um W A was having too great of an influence. And the rest of us, the fourteen hundred elected uh school board directors, um my organization, WASA, which also sent a letter in support of the three-foot, um A W S P, you know, we all have opinions about these things and we have that, we add value to these conversations. So I appreciate that I, I'm, there seems to be a um, a tone shift from the governor's office, but also um some real practical steps that they seem to be taking to try to move, move this conversation along. So I, I applaud WASDA. And Tim, as I said to you, Marnie, earlier, please pass that along. Um, the fact that I, I think they're getting through and, and getting through with an important message that will support our students.
All those Friday meetings are actually having impact now.
Yeah, yeah.
I just think for the board for your uh unwavering support of Marnie and R's work in WASDA and, and the time that sometimes it interferes with these board meetings. So, thank you.
Yeah, mine's going to tie a little bit to legislation too. I, I, I have a couple just quick items. I, I, and this is one that will, um, I want the board to be aware of, but our, our Wa-, our Washington State Financial Audit is nearly complete. It, um, all indication is that we will be uh receiving, at least I believe the first phase of the, we, the financial component i- is clean. We're anticipating, what is this going to be nineteen now, I think, or something? Um, eighteen or nineteen? I, I, I can't remember. If it is going to be nineteen, well, then clearly we got to shoot for twenty. But um we will be scheduling an audit exit um conference. In, in the past, we've always enjoyed having two board members participate in that. So just something to throw out there, President Weaver. We don't have a date yet, but if you know, you start thinking about who might want to ident, uh, join us for that. I did just want to note on a positive note, this was something that didn't seem appropriate for my educational update, but as things are moving forward and we've moved into phase three, um, you know, we opened up our facilities fields quite a while ago. We are now facility rental on our indoor spaces as well. So just one more step of um ways that we are phasing towards normal. And then the last thing I wanted to say, um, a big project that we are working on is related to the budget. And yeah, we heard some conversation that I know the Senate dropped their budget today. Um, I asked Mr. Cooper, I said, hey, what'd you see in that Senate budget? And he reminded me that I've had him in a room bargaining for quite a bit of time here. He said, we'll have a conversation about it tomorrow. But we're watching those budgets very closely because um unfortunately, we just, we think that our enrollment is going to continue. Um, we cannot predict that it's going to go up and our K enrollment is down again. So we, we are anticipating being down anywhere from twelve to eighteen hundred students. That's significant. It's going to have an impact. And frankly, I don't see how, even with some hold harmless, we, we're going to have to do a reduction in force. We're going to have to right-size our school system, if you will, uh, for um a smaller number of students. I believe ultimately as we get back to normal, students will come back. Interestingly, if you look at the demographic data, there's been almost no increase in private school enrollment in our area. Part of that is because there weren't seats. Um, so the question is, well, where are they all going? We believe there, we've seen a definite increase in homeschooling and pod schooling, if you will. So um now I'm not naive. Um, private schools are for-profit institutions by and large. And i- if I was running one of those right now, I'd probably see an opening and I'd be trying to, to take it. Um, so I, I, I don't think we can assume that we won't continue to lose students to private schools if we can't get ourselves back to a more um normal situation. So the budget work right now is really, really challenging. Um, it, it's gut-wrenching because we're having, we're going to be forced to make some really tough decisions. Um, just as we had to go through this in two thousand and nine and ten. Um, but frankly, this one in many ways is even worse because it's driven by this really sharp decline in enrollment. I, I shared with the governor's office today, the Issa, the Issaquah School District has not, to my knowledge, experienced an enrollment decline like this in generations. I mean, we've been in a growth pattern for about forty years. And we've had some little flatness and stuff, but if, if you recall, if I remember it right, even during the height of the, the Great Recession, we had a year where we actually grew like a hundred and twenty. we had a year where we actually grew like 120 students. And then, then we started to get private school return. So I just, there's going to be, and I've had conversations with our union leaders, particularly with IEA, certainly my cabinet and I, this has, it's been a standing item on our superintendent advisory committee and cabinet meetings. And those conversations are about to get real, 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 because we're going to have to bring forward a proposal for a reduction in force. And that is, I don't feel very good about that. It's just the reality. We have a fiduciary responsibility. We have to keep this place in good financial shape and solvent so we can, we'll be around to serve students for a long time. And so I just, that's a work that is in progress right now, that is consuming a lot of my mental energies and time. And I guess what I will say on that, friend, is stay tuned because there's more to come on that, unfortunately. That's all I have.
Oh, can we modify that calendar that's been proposed to us?
Oh, your annual board meeting calendar? Oh, yeah, that, you know, we do that annually, but you often, there are times during the course of a year, you even modify it.
The November meeting, like I already know right now, like there's no way I could attend that one. So if we moved it to the 18th, that Thursday in between the two weeks? Unless that's, is that, or is that WASDA's week? Is that why we don't? Because that's a WASDA annual conference?
WASDA is the 18th to the 21st.
Then can we move it to Tuesday instead, the 9th? Like, I already, I mean, I know that I won't be able to attend that meeting, that I would prefer.
We've done things like that before, so I think that would be.
Oh, wait. Yeah, I'm looking. I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
So we're talking about the November 9th? Oh, that works for me. What was that?
I was just checking with the person that makes sure that I go where I'm supposed to go and get there when I'm supposed to get there.
I know I have to miss one, but I don't see a reason to change it. Just, I have to miss October 28th. Yeah.
I just, to clarify, so I don't know what my meetings are for the NSBA board, and once we're allowed to start traveling for those, Thursdays might end up being traveling days, but I will find out and try to make sure maybe that I land so that I can participate via phone.
And we can make adjustments, too. After we establish this calendar, we can still go back and decide we have dates that we really need to change. Okay. So we're going to go for a motion, and I'm going to make an alteration in the motion. Okay. So I move the board adopt the schedule of board meetings for 2021 to 2022 school year with a change from November 10th to November 9th.
Second.
Okay. Now, we find a email. We have things that we have talked about, but we haven't formally scheduled. One is, we talked about having a special board meeting on April 14th.
Yes.
Yes, April 14th, Wednesday. And I think we talked in agenda planning that that might be with a single topic of the budget and potential playoffs. So we need to schedule that. We need to schedule a board retreat, and I believe I heard a lot of pushback on two days and the desire to do it in one day. And then we need a formally scheduled superintendent evaluation.
Okay. So, so let me ask first, though, before, so for the special board meeting on the 14th, I know Diane had indicated 7:00 PM. Is that what we all wanted? Was that the time that we had picked? Did somebody want that specifically?
Uh huh. I'm running a vaccination clinic that day, so I'd really like to be there for that part.
I don't have any problem. I just wanted to make sure we hadn't reverted somehow to the old seven and people would really prefer it earlier. Okay. Yeah, just want to make sure. Okay, so I move the board schedule a special board meeting on April 14th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, I'll go to the, I move the board schedule two special meetings for the annual superintendent evaluation on May 6th and June 3rd from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on both days. Oh, she didn't include that. Do I need to? Okay. Okay, let's see. And so just continuing on at the end, at the residence of Suzanne Weaver.
Second.
All right. Now we're on to the retreat. And on that one, I was saying I couldn't do April 30th. So if we were down to one day, I was still good with the 28th. Is that where we were headed?
But 28th still works, yes.
Yep, nine to five.
Yeah, okay. So if that's good, then I move the board schedule a retreat on April 28th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
At the administrative.
At the administrative office.
Second.
And we're releasing, sorry, I can release the 30th?
Yes. And then I just wanted to mention that after our last meeting, Suzanne and I decided to change the board candidate info night to Monday, April 26th, because otherwise, it would have been right after our retreat. That would not have been a good time. So we moved it from what we talked about Wednesday, April 28th, we moved it to Monday, April 26th at 6:00 PM, and that information is already on the district website.
As I recall, last time, it was right after our board retreat because I was all by myself doing it.
You had to do it.
Because all four of you were up for election.
Yes. Well, we decided we're not going to do it right after the retreat.
Well, that's never happened.
Yeah, hopefully. And then, were you going to respond to that nice fella from the Skyline that wanted the board to do the recipe, the bake-off? Yeah. I do. We got to do something fun. I'm up for it.
Did I miss this?
It was an email we received. I forgot about it, where they're doing a, and it's a district-wide, right?
I've got to have my mic on this. It's all the high schools. It's just the high schools.
Yeah. But it's all the high schools. They're doing a cook-off, and they're going to have like, then three from each school.
Oh, yeah, I think the administrators of each high school, of the four high schools, because I mean, I, Gibson Eck wouldn't be in it, that comes down to like, one from each high school. It kind of works its way up, and then maybe we make the final selection.
Oh, that's awesome.
Something like that. I've never heard of it before, but it sounds fun.
And clearly, it's for like the aesthetics of the food and the presentation. We're not going to be.
Yeah, it came on Tuesday. It's on behalf of Skyline ASB, the final voters on an inter-high school baking competition between Skyline, Issaquah, Gibson Eck, and Liberty. We'd love it if you could be the final deciding vote on the baking competition and present a trophy to the winning school. Okay, I will email him back and let him know that we want to do it.
Yeah. If they're asking for us, we're there.
Virtual cooking has really taken off during the pandemic. You can go and find countless YouTube videos and things, watching, you know, people baking things in their kitchen.
Wait, how does this, how do we virtually taste?
We're not going to be able to taste it.
Oh, we just have to look at it?
It's the design.
This is a lot less fun now.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if tasting random food from four different kitchens all over during a pandemic is.
That did occur to me. Okay, I will email him back. And yeah. Sounds good. Okay. And really? Oh, there we go. I'm back. Okay, and then, yeah, F1 filing due 4/15. Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, but it's still due. It's like taxes. It comes every year. It made it a lot easier now. You can just, you just give them any changes if you filed it once.
If you did it last year, it's easy, but I'm like, I have to go through because I know we've been paying off credit cards. I don't know, because of debt part.
Okay, and I think that is all I have. Anything else for the good of the order? No, we can adjourn this puppy at 10:04. Hey, that's not bad.